Dr. Chase.
Here, President.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
I can't hear you.
She's presenting.
Present.
Madam Chair, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion. Second.
Looked by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and recognition. The first awards, we'd like to recognize Carrie Neely, Chief Elementary Officer, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. The Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity for Military Children recently recognized 59 Virginia Schools as Purple Star Schools. The Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that has demonstrated their commitment to the needs of military-connected students and families. To qualify for the Purple Star designation, schools must have a trained staff member assigned as a primary point of contact for military families and students. The point of contact also serves as a liaison between the school and local military communities. Schools must also demonstrate their commitment to meeting the needs of military students by providing resources and programming on issues important to military families, such as transitions and academic planning. This is the first year, VDOE, and the Virginia Council have designated Purple Star Schools. It is my honor to announce the Stafford County Public Schools to earn this designation. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. At this time, we'd like to recognize Colonial Forge High School.
I'm the Army Retiree, guys. They told me to come down here, so I'm sorry.
JR sporting his very patriotic tie. And last but not least, Rocky Run Elementary School.
Now we can clap.
And you may clap now. Special thanks to our principals to come out and represent your schools tonight. We're really proud of you.
We'd next like to recognize Anna Marie Bolino, Fine and Performing Arts Facilitator, for
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Dr. Kizner, I would like to recognize 10 fabulous singers this evening. These talented and hard-working singers auditioned among over 700 students in the Commonwealth, all were high school seniors, and were selected for the 2018 Virginia Music Educators Association Honors Choir. The amazing accomplishments of these students are not possible without the instruction, guidance, and encouragement from our extraordinary high school choir directors, and I'd like to invite them to come forward to join me. Dr. Jordan Davidson at Brookpoint High School, Barbara Perry at Colonial Forge High School, Benita Keenan Mountain View High School, and Joe Eveler from Stafford High School. Students, as I call your name, please come forward to receive your recognition. From Brookpoint High School, Triana Ferrand and Johann Liel. From Colonial Forge High School, Clara Brown, Kirsten Chesley, and Nell Hatton. From Mountain View High School, Sarah Reed. From Stafford High School, Henry Desposorio, Malcolm Pajares, Christian Stikes, and Alison We are so proud of these students for their accomplishments. The event was in November, and our very own Mr. Eveler is actually the chair of the entire event, so he had quite a large responsibility in terms of being at the event and hosting all of the students from across the Commonwealth. I was at the performance along with other music educators from around the state. It was probably one of the most wonderful performances that I have really encountered. Would you all agree the conductor was pretty amazing, right? So I would love to recognize our students if I could have the audience join me in congratulating these singers.
And there's a bonus round here, right?
There is a bonus round, Ms. Healy. So tonight, we are going to delight you with a song, and this song was performed during their event back in November. The song is called "Words," and it was written by Anders Ennenroth, who is a Swedish singer-songwriter. He started a professional a cappella vocal jazz ensemble in Sweden, and so the song is very jazzy, and it's pretty fabulous when we heard it at the concert, so I think that you'll enjoy it, too. We're going to do it in the middle so that everybody can see. So thank you.
Words, a letter and a letter on a string will hold forever humanity spelled downwards. Possession of the beggar and the king, everybody, every day, you and I, we all can say words. Regarded as a complicated tool, created by man implicated by mankind, words. Possession of the genius and the fool, everybody, every day, everywhere and every way, oh, words. Find them, you can use them, say them, you can hear them, write them, you can read them, love them, hear them. Words transmitted as perfected from the start, received by all and were sentenced to a life with words. Impression of the stupid and the smart, everybody, every day, you and I, we all can say words. Inside your head can come alive as they're said, softly, loudly, modest, being proudly words. Expression of the living and the dead, everybody, every day, everywhere and every way, oh, words. Find them, you can use them, say them, you can hear them, write them, you can read them, love them, hear them. Find them, use them, say them, hear them, write them, read them, love them, fear them. Find them, you can use them, say them, you can hear them, write them, you can read them, love them, hear them. Words, a letter and a letter on a string.
Well, that's got to be the highlight of the evening, right? Thank you all so much, and thank you, Ms. Bolino, for sharing the talent of our students, and thank you to the families that support all our arts. That brings us to the end of the awards, and we're back to a special presentation of the FY18 Annual Budget Report and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I'm sorry, Mr. Fulmer, that you have to follow that outstanding.
Luckily, I do not have to.
Wonderful performance with this audit report.
Luckily, yep, I'm next.
Oh, good idea, Ms. Decatur.
Luckily, I do not have to follow that. Instead, I'm just introducing Ms. Krista Edoff from Terry Beckett. She's going to come down and give you guys an update on the audit process.
She's going to sing it?
No singing.
Good evening. I don't think you want me singing for you tonight. I'm going to try to pull up this presentation momentarily. Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board, and all others present in attendance tonight. I am pleased to be here to report the preliminary audit results for the June 30, 2018 audit of the financial statements. So our audit is part of a larger contract with the Stafford County, and so the School Board's financial statements are included within the county's financial statements because they are considered to be a component unit of the county's reporting. However, the school does issue their own separate financial statements, and while we are engaged to conduct a volume of services, as you might see on the screen, I am really going to focus on specifically the School Board's financial audit. So as part of our audit, we are engaged to conduct an audit on the basic financial statements. So the School Division does issue a full comprehensive annual financial report, and that's a fairly large document that includes not only the basic financial statements, but just some additional information, including management's discussion and analysis, which gives a summarized word version of the financial highlights and overall summary of the financials, and maybe some of the significant financial highlights that occurred throughout the schools during the current year. And so I would encourage you to read the management's discussion and analysis. However, that is an unaudited piece that management does provide specifically related to the financial statements themselves. There are a few additional other items built into that CAFR, the statistical section, which does give a 10-year overview of financial and other significant information. Again, that's unaudited information but is included in this document. So our audit, again, is specifically focused on the basic financial statements and the notes that supplement those basic financial statements. So in addition to the school's audit, we were also engaged to audit the school activity funds. And so those are the cash held essentially by each school for the different activities that the students participate in. So in addition to the financial piece of the audit, we are required to conduct an audit over compliance, and this is really twofold. So your overall compliance with certain laws and regulations, really prescribed by the Commonwealth of Virginia's Auditor of Public Accounts. And then the second piece of compliance relates to your compliance with the federal grants that you receive, and making sure you're just spending that money in accordance with the grant pieces. And so encompassing in those audits of compliance, we're also responsible for examining the internal control environment associated with that compliance. And so if any matters in internal controls were to be brought out during the audit, we would be required to report those to you in a separate report called a Schedule of Findings in Question Cost. Additionally, any matters of noncompliance, whether it be state requirements or federal requirements, if we identify any matters in our audit, we're also required to report those in that Schedule of Findings in Question Cost. So we do issue essentially three audit reports, the one on the financials, and then these two specifically on compliance. In addition to our financial audit, there are some additional services that we provide. One is examination over the information that you provide to the Virginia retirement system as part of participation in the state's overall pension plan. And then at the end of the audit, we do certify information related to your federal grants in an electronic format that is specifically required. And so those are all the service deliverables that we provide as part of the audit. So as far as audit results go, we do anticipate wrapping up our audit in the next couple weeks. We're just in the final phases, doing some housekeeping items, reviewing the finalized document of that CAFR, and then it will be issued in just a matter of a few weeks. We do anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion that is a clean opinion on the financial statements. So one area of note in the financials this year, there was a significant new standard required to be adopted by the School Board this year, and that relates to the accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits. This is primarily the retirees' health care that they receive once they retire. And as you saw with pensions several years ago, that information was brought onto the face of the financial statements where historically it had just been a disclosure. The same thing has happened with the other post-employment benefits. That liability for the future retirees' health care is now brought on into the face of the financial statement. So you will see a significant impact with that liability being brought on. So if you tried to compare the current year's financial statements to prior year, they're really not going to be that comparative because of that new change in the standards. So as far as our audit on school activity funds, again, we expect to issue an unmodified opinion on that, and it's a clean opinion. So with regards to our report on compliance, specifically with government auditing standards and your state compliance, we also anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion. So I told you if there were any matters where we had identified deficiencies in internal control, or if we had identified any matters of noncompliance, we would be required to report those to you. I am pleased to tell you that to date, we have not identified any matters of noncompliance in that testing over state requirements. Also, we have not identified any material weaknesses in internal control that need to be reported in this report. So with our report over the single audit, again, we anticipate an unmodified opinion. Again, there's also no material weaknesses in internal control to date, and we did have one finding that we consider to be nonmaterial, noncompliance with regards to the Medicaid program, and there was just an instance where an item was coded incorrectly, and so you received payment which you really shouldn't have received. And so management's required to put a response together just to make sure that instance doesn't happen again. As far as the internal control environment, while we had no material weaknesses, especially during our audit of the school activity funds, we do identify matters where management could improve the control environment over processing and recording transactions. Especially when we get into the school activity funds, there tends to be an overall segregation of duties matter, where you just have a limited number of staffing who's involved in the processing and recording. So we do make recommendations to management to try to improve overall those processes when it comes to recording and handling cash and other transactions. So our report on the Virginia retirement system was a clean report also, except we had one deviation where some information that VRS had recorded didn't match information in the School Board's records. However, there was no miscalculation in the items that were transmitted and reported, so it was just a matter where information didn't match. However, it had no impact on the dollars that were submitted to VRS or incorrect calculations, but we did have to note that item because it was something specific VRS did ask us to address. So at the conclusion of the audit, again, we will file this data collection form, which is an electronic filing of the federal grants that you spent. And again, that has to be certified within issuance of 30 days of the financial statements. So as a part of our audit, there are a few additional matters I am required to tell you. I did inform you that GASB-75 was adopted during the current year, which brought those OPEB liabilities onto the face of the financial statements. Aside from that, there really was no changes in the accounting policies or accounting standards with regards to the transactions in the financial statements that are recorded. So built into those financial statements, while you have certain numbers that are hard and fast numbers, like cash, cash is cash, it's a tangible item, there are estimates built into there. And so certain estimates are related to those pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as self-insurance liabilities, because essentially you take information that's known to date and you provide it to an actuary, and they use certain mortality tables and trend information, especially with OPEB, they use health care information, and they come up with what an estimated future liability is going to be, that you're going to pay for those retirees' pension and health care when they retire, or you're going to pay medical claims for people who are currently have a claim filed with the schools. And so they come up with an estimate of that long-term liability and really discount that back to present value. And so there is a lot of assumptions that go into those numbers, ultimately what's going to happen with the change. And so any change in those assumptions could ultimately change the numbers that are currently reflected in those financial statements. And again, they're based on the best-known estimates that exist to date of what's going to happen in the future. So even though we are reporting on those, we do like to, you know, at least bring to your attention that they are an estimate and could be subject to change, and you will see those changes occur throughout the years. So as part of our audit, we're required to tell you if we had any disagreements with management, or if we had any difficulties conducting our audit, and I'm pleased to tell you that we did not have any disagreements with management, and we did not have any difficulties in the conduct of our audit. Also, we're not aware of any communications that management might have had with other CPA firms where they may have been shopping for a particular opinion on a matter, so there was nothing of that magnitude that we're aware of that management has reached out to another CPA firm. As part of our audit, we are required to tell you if there's been any audit adjustments that we find and propose to ultimately make those financial statements be correct in what was reported. So I am pleased to tell you that we have not identified any audit adjustments, whether corrected or uncorrected, to date. So at the conclusion of the audit, we do obtain, and we do rely on management to provide us representations, just telling us that the information in those financial statements is their responsibility, that they did correctly report them and accord them in accordance with the accounting standards, and that they've answered all of our questions truthfully, that they've provided us all of the information that we asked for, and so management will provide that representation to us at the conclusion of the audit. So in order to conduct our audit, we are required to be independent with the School Board, and so essentially that's likened to your conflicts of interest, so that means we have no family relationships or other financial interest or bias that would cause us to give you an audit opinion that maybe you didn't warrant or deserve. So we are independent with regard to the schools. So just to alert you to some upcoming and future accounting standards, there are several items that will be effective over the next two years, but nothing that'll have a significant magnitude on the financial statements until the year 2021. And so that's when the new lease standard comes into play. And so I'm not sure what your background or how familiar you are with the accounting world, but the lease standard is actually hitting not only the government realm, but it's also hitting the private sector realm, where they're changing to one reporting model for leases. And essentially, what that's going to do is make all leases be treated like a capital lease. So you're essentially going to record an asset or the right to use an asset under that lease, and you're going to record an offsetting liability. So it's really going to create a grossing-up effect of your financial statements in the future, but it's going to be a significant undertaking, just trying to work with all of the different schools, the departments, and gather the outstanding number of leases that exist, and then examine the terms and perform the calculations to be able to come up with this number. So even though it's not effective for three more years, management will start working on the impact of the standard over the next year or two. And so that's the biggest thing that's going to affect the schools accounting-wise over the next, you know, three years. So with that, I would love to thank the Finance Department and all others that did assist us throughout the course of the audit, so specifically Chris and Joy and Lisa and all the various personnel that we did work with. An audit essentially starts planning in the April timeframe and wraps up in December, so it's an extensive process. It involves a lot of their time and effort and dedication, and so we are thankful for their assistance throughout the audit. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Ms. Young?
Yeah, I have one. Hi, thank you for that thorough audit. My question is more on that pension plan that you mentioned. So with the post-employees that benefit, when you say that you had to put it on the face of the financial statement, what does that exactly mean? Do you have to put it in detail how much money we actually are paying out to the retirees and that they, you know, so?
So the liability, I mean, every year you pay an amount as you go for the retirees' health care. And so when it comes to this standard, this says, we're going to take all the employees that are currently in this retirees' health care plan, and we're going to estimate what we have to pay them throughout their life into the future. And so it's a really large liability, and ultimately what the actuary does is discount that back to a current-year number. And so it's a very large liability that has historically been disclosed in the financial statements, but it's never been recorded on the actual statement of net position. So now you're going to see it as a liability in a line reflected on that statement of net position.
So since other school systems may or may not have it in this area, how were you able to draw comparison to be able to put that in there?
It's really not necessarily something that you can necessarily compare yourself to other school divisions unless you read their footnotes and understand that they have similar plans.
Well, if they don't have it at all, so.
Correct. And there's some that may not have it, but most of the school divisions at least participate in the Virginia retirement system. And so with the Virginia retirement system, there is a significant amount of other post-employment benefits included through the Virginia retirement system that are recorded on your financial statements. So that in itself will be comparable to what you're seeing at most of the other school divisions in Virginia. So there's a health insurance credit that you participate in, and there's a group life insurance piece that you participate in, and then many of the school divisions also participate in a long-term disability plan through VRS. And so you may have those in addition to the standalone retirees' health care that Stafford schools also participate in.
And the payment of the health insurance itself, which the other schools don't have.
Some of the schools do, many of them do, but again, Stafford County actually has, Stafford schools actually has a separate trust and plan that they have set up and set aside. Not every school division has that.
Correct.
So you can clearly see that in the financial statements, there's a section called fiduciary fund statements, and you can clearly see that OPEB trust fund and all the money that's set aside specifically for retirees' health care within that fund.
Thank you.
You have any other questions?
You have any other questions?
Just, I guess, as a follow-on to that, and that may not be your job as part of this, but sort of in the same vein about the OPEB and all of that, because it's certainly received enough notes in the, in the media. Is there some standard of, I mean, I think of it with VRS, you know, fully funded, how that goes. Is there some standard that you have included in there, or is that really something to be determined by the board of the appropriate funding amount? Do you see what I'm trying to say?
I do.
Okay.
There is no funding standard required by accounting standards or the auditors. Your actuary will look at your information, and they will propose an annual amount that they suggest that you fund the plan in order to meet all of your liabilities into the future. But again, there's nothing in the accounting standards that require you to fund that. So it's a, it's a pretty big fight across the country, I would say, whether you fund that particular plan or not. And entities like the county who issue bonds, they feel a little bit more of the pressure to fund that because the rating agencies are looking at whether you have a plan to fund those long-term liabilities. So in Virginia, because of the relationship with schools and the, you know, respect of counties or localities, there's a pretty big butting heads and fighting whether, whether those plans get funded or not, so.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number 6.01, high school class size report. And I would ask the board, unless you have a burning question that needs to be answered tonight, because we have a long agenda and a number of people signed up for speaking and the public hearing tonight, if you could, you know, send questions to Dr. Kizner, and he could share them with the, with the board. I hope, I hope you won't be too disappointed, Mrs. Cale, if we don't ask.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Tonight, I will be presenting Stafford County Public Schools 2018-2019 High School Class Size Report. Stafford County Public Schools High School Class Size Report is based on the student enrollment in core and elective classes as of September 30th, 2018. The following high school information is included: average class size for each school, frequency of class sizes, and school comparison by number of students in each class. Throughout this presentation, it's important to, for you to view our current core and elective class sizes through the lens of our school administrators and scheduling staff. As they attempt to balance the needs of students and capabilities of their staff, the reality is that creating and balancing schedules is a complex process and requires a focus of continuous improvement. Please keep in mind, our school administrators strive to meet the varying needs of all of our students' scheduling requests. The scheduling process is complicated by numerous singleton classes and diverse program requirements. For example, courses only offered once to make sure students have the opportunity to participate in the upper levels of World Language, CTE, JROTC, AP, CGS, DE, and IB. We will begin with a core class comparison. These courses include English, mathematics, social studies, science, and World Language. Based on the average daily membership as of September 30th, 2018, the total number of high school students was 9,497. We had an increase of 26 high school students compared to last year. The average division core class size is 23.7, ranging from 22.9 at North Stafford High School to 24.5 at Mountain View High School. The average high school class core size of 23.7 in 2018-2019 is a decrease of .1 compared to 2017-2018. Please note, the totals do not include an additional FTE provided to Mountain View High School to cover English. The FTE will be utilized second semester. This chart displays class span data. There are 487 classes with 20 or fewer students, ranging from 78 at Brookpoint High School to 115 at North Stafford High School. The number of classes with 20 or fewer students have increased by 66 classes when compared to last year. There are 980 classes with 21 to 27 students, ranging from 162 at Mountain View High School to 267 at Colonial Forge High School. The number of classes with 21 to 27 students increased by 72 classes when compared to last year. There are 519 classes with 28 or more students, ranging from 78 at Colonial Forge High School to 135 at Mountain View High School. The number of classes with 28 or more students increased by 77 classes when compared to last year. The graph displays that the majority of our classes still have 21 to 27 students, which are basically the optimal class sizes, not too large, not too small. Even though, of course, we'd like them all very small, but. The core class comparison relative frequency chart displays a breakdown of the class span data over the previous, on the previous slide. There's an increase of 14 classes with 12 or fewer students when compared to last year. Please note, the classes with 12 or fewer students can be broken down as follows: 15 World Language classes, 26 classes designed to have lower enrollment, such as reading across the content, ESOL classes, Algebra I Part 1 Part 2, and Geometry 1 Part 1 Part 2, et cetera, 15 AP classes, including 10 Commonwealth Governor's School classes, 14 IB classes, two math classes, one DE class, and one English class. Class sizes with 12 or fewer represent 3.6% of the total number of division classes, and class sizes with 28 or more represent 26.2% of the total number of division classes. As stated earlier, there's an increase of six classes with 20 or fewer students. Earlier, I talked about 12 or fewer. Just want to clarify that in case you were checking. This increase of 20, excuse me, six classes with 20 or fewer students is due to singleton classes such as AP, IB, CGS, and advanced levels of World Language classes. The number of classes with 28 or more increased by 77 classes. However, we did have a slight decrease in classes of 32 or more, and no classes 35 or more when compared to the last two school years. Next, we will examine the elective class size comparison. Electives include CTE, English such as journalism, creative writing, et cetera, fine and performing arts, health P E, science, for example, human anatomy and biomedical, and history, social studies, for example, global issues, sociology, and psychology. The following data points are not included in the high school elective class size report to ensure proper representation of elective class sizes. Self-contained classes, sizes due to compliance requirements, inclusion classes, these sections have been included in the core class size report, virtual classes, these classes may include numerous sections in one class due to the individual nature of the online course, and independent study. These classes may include numerous sections in one class. The average division elective class size is 24.6, ranging from 22.9 at Brookpoint High School to 25.8 at Colonial Forge High School and Mountain View High School. The average class size for electives increased by 1.1 from 2017-2018. This year, there were 188 elective classes with 15 or fewer students, ranging from 26 at Colonial Forge High School to 46 at Stafford High School. There are 687 elective classes with 16 to 32 students, ranging from 119 at Mountain View High School to 157 at Colonial Forge High School. There are 137 elective classes with 33 or more students, ranging from 21 at North Stafford High School to 30 at Colonial Forge High School and Stafford High School. The elective classes with 33 or more students are in the fine and performing arts and physical education. As the board continues to focus on the staffing standards, we look forward to the future possibilities. Areas of focus will continue to be the effective use of FTEs and scheduling practices. We appreciate the board's support and efforts to reduce school class sizes in the future. As you know, it takes a team, and special thanks to Tom Nichols, Lisa Boatwright, and Tara Vian Technology for their help and support working on the class size report.
Thank you, Mrs. Cale. Are there any burning questions?
Just, just a couple of comments. Mrs. Cale, thank you very much for this. I will say in the future, this is like way too much, I'm not the math whiz, to get through this tonight is really hard. And I appreciate, I know there's been weather, but something this massive, the board really needs a little, I, okay, this board member needs a little more time to really understand this because I think I have questions, but I can't even formulate them because this is the first time I've seen the data. But I do have one probably broader question. With regard to staffing, and I think that it comes down to, we just spent some time talking about enrollment projections, obviously. When there's a change over the summer for a school that the enrollment projections are maybe 60 to 70 kids off, when can that position or a new position be released to that school? And it may be a long conversation, but I think that's something of why the enrollment projections are important to this board. But then when we look at them, and then all of a sudden, they're not what we think. When is the trigger, or maybe this is the discussion I would love to have with the board, when do we start to say to you all, to HR, to whoever, "Wow, need to relook at this," or something? Because sometimes I can see in the elementary setting, you may move teachers quickly. But if all of a sudden you have 65 more students, like at Mountain View this year, you may not be able to slide a position as easily among high schools. And so maybe it's more of a comment, but I think it's something we as a school, because next year, in the enrollment projections, we have five more students supposedly coming to Mountain View High School. This year, we had 65. So we'll probably start with where we are. If we got that kind of, if any school got that kind of growth, we've got to be able to react quicker because I know there's a lot of openings, maybe not because there was an intent to be that way. So I think that's just something we as a board, or as the superintendent, up to talk.
High school and middle school, high school the most is so different than elementary. If you're 50, 60, one way or another, there are so many classes going on together at the same time. So if you disperse 60 or more kids among all the classes, no one's really going to feel it. And if all 60 kids were coming out of the same program, then you would, would feel it. At the elementary level, it would have greater impact because kids don't move around. So I think it's an important conversation. I guess I'm continuing to encourage the board that we'll get in, oh, thank you.
But nobody else could hear? Okay, thank you. I'll just say this. We, in my short time here, I just, you're right, there's a lot of numbers here, and I think sometimes we're getting lost in the numbers, and we're just focusing too much on numbers. And when you have high schools that's got 1,700 to 2,000 kids, 60 kids among four grades in all the classes is not really, in my judgment, a reason to take away or bring a teacher in. That's really what I'll just say.
I just want to say, I think the numbers at the high school look pretty good. I wish the middle schools looked like that. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. If, I assume if you have any other questions, you will let Dr. Kizner know. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there, did you have any questions? All right. Well, any questions, once you get a chance to digest all those numbers, please send them to Dr. Kizner. And if it's the will of the board, we can have a work session on this. So we can, and we can have it on a weekend, right, Ms. Egan?
Snippy. All right.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Cale and your team for that very detailed report. All right. That brings us to the public hearing on the FY '20 budget. I'm going to read the verbiage here, since Mr. McCosker is conveniently not here. In accordance with its FY '20 budget calendar, budget development calendar, the board will hold a public hearing during the December 11, 2018 school board meeting, so that citizens who wish to do so may provide input regarding the superintendent's FY '20 funding request. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose slash topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's all right. We'll have Mr. McCosker read it. Now, now, these comments are with respect to the, the budget public hearing, not the citizen comment portion. So.
My thing was off, sorry. Oh, your thing was off? Okay, I'll read it. Background, you mean the background? Okay. In accordance with the FY '20 budget development calendar, the board will hold a public hearing tonight, so that citizens who wish to do so may provide input regarding the superintendent's FY funding request, or, since you haven't seen it yet, the FY '20 funding request, just the budget in general, your budget priorities in general that the public has. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose and topic of their comments, should be budget. Three minutes shall be allotted to the speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens the imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113. Public comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCosker. We have one person who signed up for comments on the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget, and that is Jeffrey Trigger. If anyone wishes to speak about the budget after Mr. Trigger, please come down to the front. There is a sign-up sheet. If you have not signed up, and that would be anybody other than Mr. Trigger, you'll need to sign up when you finish your comments. Thank you.
I'll be short. Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Trigger, and I live in the George Washington District. Tonight, you all are opening up the discussion for everyone's favorite topic, the budget. Many people pull at the boards when it comes down to money. However, we do have to focus our priorities. What do we want? The Stafford Education Association proposed a 5% raise in salary for all staff. Today, Governor Northam also committed to the plan of getting the Commonwealth to increase educational funding. I'm fully aware that the entire budget can't go to salaries. However, if we desire to retain our best educators, especially in the face of growing class sizes, then it's time to pay them as if we actually want them to stay. Our schools are only as strong as the people we have inside them. This is a fact that we have to remember. Let's make sure our budget reflects this ideal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trigger. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the fiscal year 2020 budget?
Entertainment tonight. Paul Woldowski, Eight Picket Lane, please do not come to my property. I live in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. I don't like giving away my public address. I think it's unconstitutional. But here's my comments on the FY budget. Number one, I believe we only need five school board members. We only have five high schools. That's $12,000 per school board member, which is $24,000 a year, which would be $96,000. And then maybe you can buy another one of those bus number 81, you know, that was bus number 48 that doesn't know how to use the cul-de-sac. Now, the other aspect of the budget is, hopefully, the superintendent stays this time. But I do believe $226,000 is too much. And I was just at the Board of Supervisors, and I heard them whining about giving $400,000 to your Fredericksburg Christian acquisition or whatever you're doing. So don't worry, I, I let them feel as, like politics is, you know, politics is poly, which is many, and tics is blood-eating animals. So now you know what polytics is. Now, we have five high schools in the county, eight middle schools. I heard the comment that the numbers are good for high schools. I also just came from the Board of Supervisors, and I listened to the supervisors, and I agree that mathematically, you don't need any more schools. You need to start looking at models based off of eighteen years is what it takes to get a PhD. It's a public high school diploma. My cicadas, you know, I'm the chairman, they selected me, just like you select your chairman. They're gonna graduate in twenty thirty. That's if there's no more development. So please be aware of that. I know number eighteen elementary school is on the books, and probably it's a good thing, especially since we spent four-point-five million dollars for firehouse number fourteen. That gives us about as many firehouses as we do have seven-elevens in the county. So please be mindful when you're looking at these budgets and you look at these numbers, that humans are discrete, they're not continuous, and they're not average.
Mr. Woldowski, would you please sign in? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the budget and come back to citizen comments. Mr. McOsker?
Okay.
Again.
Okay, I'm gonna read again. Citizen comments. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens the imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy one, 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 three, public complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McOsker. We have twenty-two people that have signed up for the public comment tonight, and that would take a little over an hour if each one takes their three minutes. We have a rather long agenda with other items because it's the only meeting this month. Is there any desire on the board to limit the public comment to a certain amount of minutes?
Yes. I propose that we limit the public citizens comment to seventy minutes. So we have twenty-three people, so I'm three minutes. If everybody takes their three minutes and three minutes only, we could get through the whole thing in seventy minutes.
Is there a desire on the board to, to limit the comment to the, we've done it before when we've had an unusually large number of sign up and, you know, and a heavy agenda?
My only concern may be for anybody who came that does not know how to sign up, that we give some kind of invitation to those who may have come and didn't know to sign up, how their comments should be able to be submitted to the board. Because I would hate for somebody to have maybe come.
Can we ask?
Did not know to sign up. I mean, I know that, but.
Yeah, can we ask?
I know we weren't here. I was just saying.
No, can we ask?
Well, let's hear from the board first, and then we'll.
I mean, good question.
Okay, any other comments?
I just have a question. Do we have, it has nothing to do with public comment period. Do we have, like, announcements for folks tonight?
Board member comments?
No, announcements.
Announce, what kind of announcements?
If, if we're gonna be an hour and a half just doing public comment, are there people in the audience that need to be introduced or anything?
Not that.
If we could move that, I would support that.
So that they don't have to sit here for.
To move the consent agenda?
Please.
Move the consent agenda. Okay. We can, all right. Mr. McOsker.
I'm good with seventy minutes. Limiting it to seventy minutes, and those that don't make the seventy minutes, submit in writing.
To our clerk.
To the clerk.
All right. Dr. Chase, did you?
I'm good with that as well.
Mr. Gator?
Have we got a motion to move the consent agenda?
Yes. All right. Well, first, first, let me say then that we will restrict the total citizen comment to seventy minutes, which actually, we may have some leftover time because we've got twenty-two people signed up. Some people may not take the entire three minutes. We will have to stop at three minutes, though, to allow these people. And there will be, hopefully, some time at the end of that for anyone who wants to, to address the board. If you do not have an opportunity to address the board this evening, you can submit your comments to our clerk, Ms. Hall. Come back to the next meeting in January for the public comment period at that time. We have two meetings in January, so hopefully our agenda will not be as chock full. Is that, no objection? We'll say seventy minutes. And Ms. Hall, you can start when we start with the first person. Now, I also heard a request that we move the consent item up. That's not going to take very long at all. Is there a general agreement with, with that?
Yes, I agree to move the consent.
Okay, I see. No, no objection.
Objection.
Let's, let's go ahead and take the consent agenda, item number eleven. All in favor of the, oh, we need a motion to approve. Sorry.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. McOsker. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Now we will.
Defer to the superintendent?
Approve the consent agenda. Do we have an announcement?
Yes.
Based on the action that you just took.
Microphone.
Yes, thank you.
Where's Stafford?
Based on the action that you just took, I'd like to welcome and introduce Ms. Kimberly Hardman, who will be the new assistant principal for Stafford Elementary School. Ms. Hardman is currently a social worker at Hartwood Elementary School and has been in that role since two thousand thirteen. As a social worker, Ms. Hardman is an integral part of the Student Education Committee. While at Hartwood, Ms. Hardman developed, implemented both after-school and summer school programming that targeted student needs related to social, emotional, and behavioral growth. She served as a liaison between families, the schools, community agencies, to enhance communication and access resource for families. Ms. Hardman earned her bachelor's degree in psychology and justice studies from JMU, woo-hoo, and her master's of social work degree from George Mason University. She completed her ed leadership endorsement at the University of Mary Washington. Welcome. Congratulations.
All right. So we will now begin the citizen comment period. I will call five names at a time, and if you can line up, so you can just follow the speaker ahead of you, that will allow us to move more efficiently and allow time for more speakers. The first speaker is Jennifer Nativity Dodd. Second is Reggie Pickett. Third is Thomas Taylor. Fourth is Jessica Foster. And fifth is Leslie Cook.
Good evening. I'm, I'm fourth, but I don't see one, two, and three before me.
Okay, we're good. Is, oh, all right. Well, if you want to line up, is Ms. Nativity Dodd here?
No.
She's not here? All right. That means Reggie Pickett, Thomas Taylor, Jessica Foster, and Leslie Cook.
Someone behind it. Five, two more? Okay.
And if you have anything you want to submit to the clerk for the record, as Mr. Pickett just did, you can give it to Ms. Hall before or after your comments.
All right. Good evening. My name is Thomas Taylor. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to, there's gonna be some speed reading here. I'd like to express my concern and displeasure regarding the proposed policy concerning transgender students using the facilities of the gender identity as proposed. So far as any subset of society has no intent to, or has in actuality infringed upon my equal rights, health, and well-being, or that of my family and my ability to protect their development and well-being insofar as my responsibility as a husband, father, and parent, I have no issue. This proposal, however, does just that. Based on what I've recently read, comments attributed to Mr. Kizner, this is not a fix, but rather a litigation avoiding one-sided flip-flop, a demonstrated emphasis on the few while encouraging others through little choice to conform. I do not believe that transgender students are dangerous by their presence in gender-identified facilities insofar as sexual assault in any physical form is concerned. However, I do absolutely object to the forced situation where the potential for my children's exposure to the anatomy of the opposite sex is created, and my young children are faced with the decision of removing themselves from the facilities intended and designed with their anatomy and privacy in mind as a means to reduce a probability they should not have to contend with. In my comments attributed, my children, if they have an issue, actually, in the comments attributed to Mr. Kizner, if my children have an issue or a concern, counseling is available, or they may opt to use a single-stall restroom. So now my child potentially brings attention to themselves, or worse, is labeled as ill-adjusted, as would be the insinuation of needing to seek counseling on the matter. This isn't prevention from seeking and finding equal access to a school system or an education. This isn't a matter of lack of respect or inclusion in larger sense, blocking anyone from doing anything that doesn't have direct impact at a personal and potentially detrimental level. This is taking inclusion to a different level, which circumvents parents' abilities to determine suitability of exposure of their children at the hands of a taxpayer-funded institution, while subjecting those who don't agree into making their own inclusion and conformity decisions at the ripe old age of eight, nine, eleven years old. Do you or did you openly display your genitalia or create conditions where such was likely to occur with your children of opposite sex at such an age in your home, during the years after infancy when differences become apparent? What's your response if standing at a urinal and you're a male and a young girl walks in the restroom? Do you consider the potential of just letting it sit as, well, there's counseling available, available for if she's not comfortable? I seriously doubt it. Yet hopefully make an effort to minimize any exposure and help rectify the situation. How many psychologists were consulted regarding the potential impacts of this matter on children who are not transgender? What advocacy groups' opinions were solicited? Each of us as human beings and with equal rights in this country have the ability to determine our own actions, our own pursuit of self-expression. However, that does not mean that the remainder of society must agree or comply with our desires, actions, or feelings to the detriment of our rights to things such as age-appropriate modesty and freedom from exposure to anatomy of the opposite sex.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is Reggie Pickett here? Brings us to Jessica Foster, followed by Leslie Cook.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Foster, and I live in Falkir County. I come before you this evening, today, to urge you to adopt the policy proposed by Dr. Kizner that would be the first of its kind in Virginia. This policy will reflect well on Stafford County and set the examples for counties statewide. Opposition to this policy is grounded in fear, much like when men feared the woman vote, much like when whites feared sharing the water fountains. There is simply no substance in these fears. You will likely hear arguments, as the gentleman before me, that there may be some girls that are at heightened risk of sexual assault by a boy who comes into a bathroom who is wearing girls' clothes. I say that in quotation marks. There is absolutely no evidence to support such assertion. The allegation is absurd and patently false. Hundreds of cities, school districts, and many states already protect transgender people's rights to use the restroom that matches their identity, and none have seen a rise in these types of attacks. A child's gender identity does not make that child a sexual predator, nor, no more than the sexual orientation does. Privacy concerns are a red herring. Transgender children will go to the bathroom for the same reasons as any other child, to do their business and to leave. We have stalls on the doors, and the privacy argument is just another way to discriminate and exclude. This policy would not be violating anyone's rights, not their religious freedoms or any other rights protected by the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Virginia. It does not impose any belief system upon any other person, and it does not require any person to give up their rights at all. Equal protection and fairness are not pieces of a pie that must be shared. We should all have access. Standing up for equality and inclusion is the right thing to do. History does not frown upon equal treatment of human beings. You have the chance to make history in Virginia. Please adopt this policy, because hate and exclusion have no home in Stafford County.
If, if the audience wants to take the time to clap, it will take away from the comments we're gonna be able to hear, because we have a predetermined number of minutes. So I'm just pointing that out. As, as a courtesy, I would ask that you hold your applause. We have Leslie Cook here, followed by Melissa Bradley and Hannah Bradley.
You very much. So I'm Dr. Leslie Cook. I'm a clinical psychologist. Great news. You asked for one, and I showed up. I'm licensed to practice here in the state of Virginia. I specialize, currently, I specialize in at-risk youth and adults, but I have a long history of working in neuropsychology, working with gender and sexuality issues, and working with school-based learning disorders. So today I was called a Nazi online. It's not a big deal. I've been called worse than that. I actually had my life threatened last year after speaking at this board. I was called a Nazi via private message because of a quote that I gave to the newspaper, saying that I was proud of this board. And I will stand by that statement every breathing moment that I have, because I am proud of this board. I'm proud of this board for multiple reasons. Probably the biggest reason is that it's a diverse board. It's a board of divergent religious ideology, political ideology, experience, background, and yet, what has come out of the board is a moderate, fact-based, reasonable policy that will save lives. Now, I was also told that that was hyperbole today. And I totally understand why someone would think that. Why on earth would a policy like this save lives? I mean, that's kind of ridiculous, right? Except that forty-five percent of trans kids try to kill themselves in high school in this nation every year, and that is not because they are trans. That is because the interaction of being trans in a world that sometimes makes it very challenging to be so. So it's not hyperbole. It will save lives. I have lost patients to suicide in their teenage years. I was also told that psychology is a soft science, but I don't, I mean, it feels hard to me. All the hours I spent in a lab felt hard, and I'm pretty certain that the data that comes out of meta-analyses, which I can provide to the board if you want it, is also pretty hard science. Tonight, I want to propose a very quick exercise. As people come and speak here, I'd like everyone in the audience and everyone on the board to pretend that you are the student they are speaking of. Hear them, look in their eyes, believe what they tell you, see what you feel when they speak. Do you feel seen and heard and supported? Do they make insinuations about you? Do they say things about you? Right? Or do they make you feel like you can access your curriculum safely? So that's an exercise I'd like all of us to do. Look them in the eye when they make these comments. Believe what they tell you. It's really how they think and believe, and they would stop this policy from being enacted. So I guess I want to say one more time that I am proud of this board. I'm proud to come here and listen to long, long speeches quite frequently, and I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa Bradley, followed by Hannah Bradley and Amy Adams.
My name is Hannah Bradley. I live, I live in the Rock Hill District. I am standing up for my sister. My big sister is amazing and so brave. It makes, it makes me happy when she lets me play on her phone, because she is addicted to that thing. What does it, what does it make me happy is her not feeling as safe or comfortable as at school like me, just because she is transgender. Love is love. People are people. Please protect my big sister. Thank you.
My name's Melissa Bradley. I live in the Rock Hill District. I've lived here majority of my life. I spent all of my years in Stafford County Public Schools. I never had a problem with hatred or discrimination with my friends. We were exposed to many, many things that parents don't agree with. I had a friend that would come to school with vodka in her coffee cup in high school. That's, that's not, you know, something you want your child being exposed to. I have things that my eleven-year-old is exposed to that I wouldn't want her exposed to. She came home at four years old from head start asking how to play boyfriend and girlfriend. She's also exposed to sex and cussing and Fortnite and Facebook. Those things, we don't want in our, my house, you know, those video games. But what I do want is inclusion. What, believe it or not, you know, that, that's all that we want is inclusion. I don't want her to go to school and feel that she is not safe. The, the look of fear on my child's face when she thought that I wasn't able to go on her field trip with her, the fear of if she was going to be protected out in a public scenario by a school who is so cut and dry about where she can and cannot relieve herself. She has to pass two bathrooms. She loses 15 minutes of class to go to the bathroom. I don't know about you, but I don't have my lady parts hanging out in a, in a public restroom. That's for sure. I don't need anybody seeing this, and I know nobody wants to see that. I can, I can promise you that. But my child was diagnosed with ODD at age four and anxiety at age seven. At age nine, she, with research and psych help, transitioned socially and no issues of ODD or anxiety whatsoever. She's a very happy social child. I, I came from a full Catholic family, a full Catholic family. I grew up thinking that Catholicism was the only belief system until I went into the public school system and my friends were able to teach me otherwise. We know that religion is not taught in the schools, but I was exposed to every other religion that you can imagine by way of my friends. Again, that is not something that you guys teach, and I still learned it and brought it home. You guys are not teaching that everybody has to, that, that, you know, everybody has to be okay with transgender. We just need to teach everybody that equality is the main point here. So again, in a public restroom in Target and Walmart, you're going to run across drug dealers and pedophiles and gang members, but not in a school bathroom.
Thank you. Amy Adams, followed by Jeffrey Trigger and Amy Cannon.
My name is Amy Adams and I reside at 15 Patton Lane. I'm a lifetime Stafford resident and the mother of three kids who all attend school in the county. I want to say how thrilled I am about Policy 2420. I am thankful to Dr. Kizner for getting this drafted, not only quickly but thoughtfully. This policy will change the lives of many, many children in our district, mine included. I know that there are some concerns from community members that this policy could cause safety issues, so I wanted to briefly highlight some research done by a Prince William County School Board member. Almost two years ago, when debating an update to the anti-discrimination policy, this board member felt unsure of how he should vote. In order to make sure his decision was a well-researched one, he contacted 42 of the largest school districts in the country that had gender identity and sexual orientation in their policies. He spoke with superintendents, school board members, administrators, board attorneys, and others involved in these districts. He asked two specific questions. Has a transgender student ever harmed another student in the restroom or locker room? And has a male student ever dressed as female to access female segregated spaces? In 42 school districts with 3.6 million students, there were zero reports of attacks by a transgender student and zero reports of a male student dressing as female to gain access to female segregated spaces. If any school board members would like to review this very detailed and thoughtful research, I'm happy to forward the presentation. I hope that each of you will do your own thoughtful research and perhaps speak to some school districts with inclusive policies in place. I thank you in advance for the time, effort, and the consideration that I know you will put into this decision. I know it's a big one, but I believe that we are ready. Thank you.
Mr. Trigger will be followed by Amy Cannon and Leaky Enz.
My name is Jeffrey Trigger and I live in the George Washington District. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of the board members for drafting a policy that is inclusive to all students. I know that couldn't be easy, but you did it. Just for that discussion alone, this is an historic moment for the rights of students, no matter who they are. Policy 2420 will make me a better educator. From the evidence provided to me from the Teaching and Learning Summit, students who don't feel respected for who they are experience more stress in a classroom. Stress on a developing mind of a child can impact the cognitive ability to process new material by as much as 80%. If we can remove that stress, or we have a chance to help more students have success. I also like the fact that Policy 2420 included accommodations for those feeling uncomfortable in a locker room or bathroom situation. The policy also provides opportunity for counseling. I know opinions differ greatly among the crowd, among the board, and I'm sure even among allies on how to handle this situation. I'm sure that 2420 isn't perfect. However, education isn't about perfect. It's about our mistakes and how we overcome. The board is part of education, and it must be willing to put in the effort if it ever desires to overcome the inevitable human mistakes. Honestly, all of our strength does not come from our successes but our failures. The last note I'll end with comes from a second-grade relative of mine. This year, my relative told Santa Claus there was no want of presents for Christmas. Her request was for people to be kind to each other. That's a profound statement coming from a second grader. It's also advice that I'm willing to ask everyone in this room take away from today. Thank you.
My name is Amy Cannon and I live in Prince William County, and I'd like to thank you all for having us here to speak today. I had prepared remarks. I'm not using them. I'm just going to speak for a couple minutes. I'm a mom. My daughter's 30 now. She's married to a man, but she identifies as queer. It was hard for her in Prince William County to even think about what her identity might be because she was afraid. Trans kids are afraid in school. They're afraid of being outed, and using incorrect facilities for their gender identity can out them. This policy is so important so they can just be kids. No person goes to the bathroom to look at other people's genitalia. It doesn't happen. As someone who has a very small bladder and visited the bathroom 14 times a day when I was in high school, I can only imagine what these kids go through, having to run past one bathroom, two bathrooms, three bathrooms, missing class because they need to pee. That's all they want to do. This is so important, and I'm so proud of Stafford for leading this fight. Prince William County, we, we will follow you. We will use this as an example. Believe me, we will take this to our own school board and, and show them that this can be done. We can protect our trans kids. We can give them this little thing that will make them feel so much better. Statistically, trans kids are at a much higher risk for suicide, but if you give them supportive families, if you give them supportive communities, if you give them supportive schools, that suicide rate drops to being the same as every other kid. If that's not the best reason of all, I don't know what is. Thank you very much for doing this. Thank you very much for listening, and I hope that you will get this passed.
After Mr. Enz, Beth Enz, followed by Joni Wilson.
Good evening, School Board. I want to thank you for coming to the redistrict meeting last week. You guys dedicate time away from your families. I know it's not easy. You're here listening to us complain, but I do appreciate it because it's a servant job. I've worked in education before. You're never going to get paid enough to be in education. It's a servant-minded job. So you're balancing budgets, and I appreciate your hard work doing that. I just want to speak to this proposed policy. I did get a chance to meet Dr. Kizner last week at the redistricting meeting. I have been living in Stafford off and on since 2005. I have four children. Moncrief Elementary School, I have three, and I have one at Shirley High. I work in downtown Washington, DC. I've seen what big city school districts are capable of doing or not doing. Okay? I've also spent time in New York City. I appreciate Dr. Kizner's background. He brings a different perspective here. I chose to live in Stafford County because the families that live in Stafford County have made it what it is today. Do not bend to some weak policy or public pressure around building a policy that has no purpose in this county. The families in this county who have paid taxes, raised their families, have chosen to stay here. We're looking to you for leadership and vision. I appreciate the research that people have done on this topic. If you look to the future, what else might you see? What are the health risks of someone going about gender transformation through medical techniques? Are they going to be able to reproduce and have their own children? What teacher in your schools is going to be willing to put their name and their family on the line for a potential lawsuit down the road if we adopt a policy that they're now coaching children on transgender decisions at the age of eight, 10, 12 years old? They're going to impact their ability to have a family in their 20s, 30s, and 40s. Do we want that risk today? Stafford County has a proud history. The Marine Corps Museum up the road is a great place to get a start, Dr. Kizner, and I hope you've got a chance to see the history of our county and the families that live here and serve our country and the values that they share. I just encourage you to think about those things when you're considering this policy because you will be supported in this county. You were all voted in by residents who pay taxes in this county, and we will support you. But don't bend to the pressure of an angry mob. We've seen it in the nation all around us this year. It's not acceptable. Okay? We do not run our country this way, and you folks are supported in your roles, and we care about you, and we support you. So just please consider that when you're looking at this policy tonight. Thank you.
Hi, School Board. My name is Beth Enz or Elizabeth Enz. I've got four sons that are at the Stafford County Schools, and as my husband said, we've been in and out of Stafford since 2005. We had our first born here, so we, we kind of like it. I just wanted to speak more about sharing my heart on, we're a conservative family, but we're not concerned with the transgender student being a threat to our family or to our students. We're really not concerned about that. I know that's been brought up, and maybe some people do feel that way, but as a mom of four, that's never crossed my mind. I used to work with transgender people, never been an issue. But what I do want to speak about is more about that percentage of the suicide risk. I think we need to spend more with that. And what's concerning to me is if we adopt a policy that makes it accepted at an age that's so young and that doesn't differentiate on the age group and when they decide that they want to become transgender, we're maybe bringing it up a little bit too early in their development, and they're not actually ready to make a decision that impacts their entire life. You know, we don't let them smoke. We don't let them buy alcohol. We don't let them get married. They don't enlist. They don't do any of these things until they're at an age that is capable and acceptable because they're not ready to make those decisions. So why are we going to, as a school board, make it acceptable for them to make a decision and make it an acceptable policy, I guess, that might make other students who are kind of not sure about their own nature and they're already trying some things out and experimenting and whatnot? And we give them safe boundaries to experiment as family, as a school board, as schools. We give them those safe boundaries and whatnot so that they can experiment safely. But making it an acceptable policy for this type of thing is not giving them those safe boundaries. It's maybe allowing some kids who have been abused, right? Who have had sexual abuse and they're not sure. And maybe they do decide to become transgender because they want to get as far away as possible from that abuser as they can. And that's the kind of person we don't want to see turned to be transgender just because of that. And along with that, you know, you don't want them to decide to become transgender and then down the road change their mind because what kind of implication is that going to have on their life in the future? You know, being different is okay. It's okay to be different. There's nothing wrong with that. We celebrate our differences. That's what makes us the great United States, is our differences, coming together from different countries, different backgrounds, different ethnicities, different beliefs, different religions, but we come together and we collaborate as one. So just remember that as you go through this. Maybe a policy is not the best answer at this point, and maybe it's being reactive to the situation that happened and not taking the time to really think through what it could cause in the future. Thank you.
After Joni Wilson, Evelyn Brumar, Mike Shepherd, and Jim Isaacowitz.
My name's Joni Wilson. I live in the city of Fredericksburg, but I have family here in Stafford Schools. I've been coming to the school board meetings for several years. I've learned a lot. I've heard a lot of well-informed information, and I've certainly heard my fair share of misinformed information. I wanted to thank Dr. Kizner and the board for the proposed Policy 2420, supporting our transgender and non-binary students. We know that our children's schools, faculty, and staff have a significant impact on our children, and this policy will be an important step towards making our schools a safe, supportive environment that is necessary for our children's healthy development. Thank you. Stay strong, and know that this policy is an important and right thing to do. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanking, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Evelyn Brumar, and I live in Prince William County. I want to share with you my experience going through high school, not having a policy that was inclusive or protected LGBTQ students. During my time, during my public school education, there wasn't any protections for the LGBTQ students or staff. I was eyewitness intimidation, bullying, assault of children from other children, where the source was the fear of someone's sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression that wasn't popular or deemed socially acceptable. These talented, smart kids started coming less and less to school. It got so bad that one kid took their life. Then I found myself in that situation. This experience taught me to fear people. I started to label them, identify and categorize them as bad people by the way they looked, talked, and their mannerisms. I was doing the same thing my attackers were doing to me. This experience delayed the gifts I could have been given to the people in my community that were in need. It caused me to run with fear, not to be a productive member of my community. Fear caused me to hate and be angry for the longest time, damaging any success to be gained. It was draining and didn't make the change I needed or wanted, so I had to learn how to self-examine, lift myself up, and start to lead with love. I was able to do this because people who loved me and dedicated themselves to me, I was, that I was getting from strangers and new friends, softened my heart and gave me the strength to stop running with fear but lead with love. When I met my wife, she was active-duty Navy. I couldn't see her off or pick her up from the base because I wasn't recognized as a Navy wife. If she died in combat, serving our country, I had no rights to her body. If it wasn't for the kindness and love of our other Navy, of the other Navy wives, including, including me on updates, taking me on base, helping me meet my needs while she was deployed, we would not have had had a successful military service. And I say "we" because I served with her as a Navy wife with none of the benefits. Now my wife and I are active with our local Legion, help fundraise for our local Wounded Warrior Organization, and make sure the needs of our vets are getting heard when advocating for them when meeting our elected officials. I serve as a vice president of my daughter's high school, PTSA. I do clothing drives and food drives for our local community and county food pantries and homeless shelters. Advocate for equitably equality, equitably, meaning not everybody is equal and coming from the same level. Everybody starts from a different level. I am started from a different level because of my experience in high school. They helped us, these organizations came together to help us move forward and pass, and pass the hate. I'm sorry, excuse me. When the KKK came to my community, I organized a Community Unity Against Hate event where elected officials and nonprofit organizations helped us move past this and move forward. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Mike Shepherd, Jim Isaacowitz.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mike Shepherd. I'm here to talk about what everybody's been talking about, 2420. I too chose to live here in Stafford County. One reason, because of the school district and the reputation this school system has. Had a lot of concern when I saw that this was even being thought about because I have an 11-year-old daughter who goes to a middle school here in the county and a seven-year-old son who goes to an elementary school. Everyone here knows that children are very impressionable at this age. When they have an adult or a school administrator telling them that everybody can go into the boys' or girls' bathroom based on what they've decided that day, it can be very problematic. I had a conversation with my wife and my daughter, my son. I chose to leave out of this conversation because he's seven, but we talked about that.
I chose to leave out of this conversation because he's seven, but we talked about that. You know, there could possibly be somebody who's the opposite sex who's in the girls' locker room with you. Now, they don't dress out for gym. Next year, eighth grade, going on up into high school, they're going to be dressing out in gym. My daughter is very concerned that she could be in the gym locker room and be looking at a naked boy, even though this boy identifies as a girl. This is a much more complex issue than I originally thought about. Some of the speakers here today have made me think about some things. While I don't condone persecution, discrimination of any kind, that's one of the reasons I chose to leave my chosen profession 10 years ago and get into law enforcement. All that's necessary for the triumph of evil is good people to stand by and do nothing. And I think that this is something that you guys need to step back from and take a major look at. It's not just about bathrooms and locker rooms. Look at Australia right now, the women's handball team. No woman's handball team has a chance against them because they've got a man, a biological man, who's six foot three, 250 pounds, playing on their team. If I understand your policy right, a boy who identifies as a girl could be trying out for a baseball team that my daughter's trying out for, or a basketball team. My daughter could be cut from a sport she could excel in, get a scholarship to a college at because there was a biological boy who is genetically stronger that identifies as a female that gets the spot on the team. It's not just about bathrooms. It's not just about people's feelings. My personal beliefs is there's a right and wrong. I'm a Christian, but I'm not looking at this through that lens. My 11-year-old daughter, 12-year-old daughter in seventh and eighth grade, changing in a locker room with a biological boy sitting there staring at him is a grave concern, and it should be a concern to you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Jim Isaacowitz, Bill Johnson Miles, and Allison Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Jim Isayevich. I live in Quahia Harbor. I don't hold it against you that you can't pronounce my last name. It's been my wife's last name for almost eight years, and she can't say it either. The first thing that I want to point out, I think is kind of a little bit transcendent from the thing we're talking about tonight, is I just want to recognize that little girl that came up here and spoke. Regardless of the position that she has on the issue, the fact that a young girl was given the opportunity, was kind of encouraged to come up and express her opinion, regardless of how you think about that, I think is something to be celebrated. And I look back, I didn't see her here tonight, but I'd still like to donate like maybe three seconds of my time to like just give that a round of applause, so. Now, that being said, I want to move into the, you know, less touchy-feely part of my speech here. The one thing that I want to point out is misframing the opposing side as being filled with hate or any sort of ill will, I think, is not really showing your best side of your own, your own argument, pardon me, and really isn't what this sort of public discourse should be about. No part of what I have to say is meant to detract from the pain and suffering of transgender students. Students of all types, I think we all agree, should be protected from threats, harassment, and especially violence. My concern has less to do with bathroom usage and more to do with the potential for improper indoctrination without adequate public information. So such a seismic shift in this policy, we're the first county in Virginia who's considering this, right? Should be decided by the electorate, or at least with more of the electorate's opinion. I'm admittedly a new resident to Stafford. I moved here about a year ago, but I've been unable to find this proposed policy anywhere online. It wasn't even written down on a piece of paper for me to read in the front lobby, as far as I could see. If not a referendum, then this is the sort of thing that you, when you go up for reelection, should stand on, and it should be part of your reelection campaign. I understand that one of the main issues that kind of brought this up to light was the thing that happened back in October. I think we all agree, right? That was a pretty bad situation. It's an active shooter drill. It doesn't matter who the kid is or how they identify, get them somewhere safe. I think we all agree on that. But making a knee-jerk reaction and proposing a policy without adequate public information, I don't think is the way to go. And regardless of how you feel about this situation, it's going to taint the way this policy is viewed moving forward. We've heard the opinions of people from outside of this county, but I don't think the opinions of most of the residents of Stafford County have been adequately heard. The potential for punishment or re-education of students who express feelings contrary to the proposal is real and potentially damaging to those students. That's the part that I have the biggest concern with as a parent. I want to make sure that no matter what is going on, if my child expresses their opinion, they're not going to be punished for it. Thank you.
My name is Bill Johnson Miles. I live at 27 Allegheny Court in Stafford. I'm here to speak on the superintendent's proposed new policy on gender identity and expression. I am a retired 20-year Navy veteran, a board of trustee member with my church. I'm the secretary of the Stafford Democratic Committee, and I'm the newly-elected second vice president of the Stafford NAACP incoming. I have sent, I support the policy. I've sent Ms. Decatur an email and CC'd everybody with my position on this, but I'm not here to speak about my, about my feelings on that. I'm actually here to read a letter. There it is. This letter is from the incoming president-elect of the Stafford Democratic Committee, Joshua Cole, Reverend Joshua Cole, who could not be here tonight. He had another event in Richmond he had to attend, but this is his letter. Civil rights and social rights are paramount difference, are a paramount difference America has over other nations. We were taught, especially myself as a product of Stafford County Public Schools, that all men, including all people, are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. What sticks out to me today is the pursuit of happiness. To take this a little further, in our own Virginia Declaration of Rights, we state that all men are by nature equally free and independent, have certain inherent rights, of which, when they enter into a state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive or divest their prosperity, namely the enjoyment of life and liberty, which means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. That's really nothing, there is really nothing more that should be stated. We are all equally free and should have the ability to express ourselves the way we want to be happy. I urge you to pass this resolution for the equality and equitability of our students. As a local religious leader, I must also urge you, if this resolution concerns you or makes you uncomfortable, then pray for our students instead of demonizing and throwing your faith in their face. What better way to show Jesus than to reach them with loving kindness? Our students, our students already have enough to deal with emotionally and mentally. Let's help ease their concerns. Thank you, Reverend Joshua Gregory Cole, President-elect, Stafford NAACP.
Allison Sullivan, followed by Kristen Barnes and Catherine Nordine.
Hi, my name is Allison Sullivan. I am a resident of the Falmouth District. I am a former Stafford County School social worker. I am a longtime resident of Stafford County, and both of my children were educated through Stafford County Schools. I am here tonight to thank you for this policy proposal and to urge you to support it. As a licensed social worker in the state of Virginia, I won't go through the research that's already been cited, I won't go through the neuropsych that's already been cited, but let me just say that we do know these things called adverse childhood experiences do impact people throughout their lifespan. And one of the things that creates an adverse childhood experience is not having a safe place to learn. Chronically exposed to conditions where people don't have a space to be who they are impacts their ability to learn, to connect, and to feel safe in general. I urge Stafford County to be a pioneer in turning that trend around for our students who need this so desperately. Protect space for all of our students, not just our trans students, but as this policy very judiciously outlines, support for all of our students. Thank you.
Hello, Kristen Barnes. I'm in the Rock Hill District. I've spoken many times with you before, and I'd like to speak with you tonight, not necessarily about how I feel about the transgender policy, but how I feel about the way we're going about it. I was at the redistricting meeting last Wednesday night, and that was a pretty hefty crowd. And I would like to encourage you to hold a public hearing specifically for this new policy so that the community can be more aware of this policy, possibly even send a letter home because there's a lot of people who don't know this is going on. I would hate to see this fly under the holiday radar. This is not a great time of year to be presenting big changes. We need to do that in a more public way when people are paying attention. I would like to have a conversation with the wider audience of the community, instead of just the usual folks, me included, that come and tell you what we think, and you probably already know what we think. I think it would be a good idea to have that conversation, even if you have a town hall meeting, bring in professionals from both sides of the issues that maybe could educate people or even change my mind. It's a possibility. If we do have that conversation, this is how I hope this conversation will go. We will agree on some things, and we will disagree on others. We can share perspectives and ideas and opinions and have honest conversations about the implications of this policy and its repercussions. If I disagree with someone, I will not vilify them. I will not call them names. I will not call them ignorant. I will not degrade or diminish anyone for an opinion that is different than mine, even if I really don't like it. I will be tolerant. If someone has a different religion or moral code, I will not call them a fear monger. I will not call them phobic, and I will not call them hateful, and I hope that you will do the same for me. Please give us, the community, the time to have this conversation with you and schedule a public hearing. Thank you.
Following Catherine Nordine, Michelle Goshorn, and Ash Grace.
Excuse me, because I was before Kat. I'm sure that was, you just called, it's fine.
Who are you?
Michelle Goshorn. It's, I'm sure it was.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Kat's going to be after me, it all works out.
Catherine Nordine was before you, but that's all right if you're here. Sorry, Ms. Nordine.
Hi, my name's Michelle Goshorn. I live at 20 Fletcher Drive in the Falmouth District. First, I would like to thank the superintendent in bringing forth clear, common sense policy for our staff and students to address gender identity and expression. It's a great first step, and I urge the board to continue looking at this and approve the policy as quick as possible. Second, this past week, overall K through five capacity was raised from 13.5,000 to 15.1,000, in addition of 16,775 seats. 725 of those seats can be accounted for by pre-K moving out of elementary and the added capacity of the Moncur rebuild. This leaves an additional 950 seats, the size of a large elementary school. To illustrate how this will increase class size, I did a deep dive on Falmouth Elementary because I know it. Falmouth Elementary currently, as of 9:30, is 631. With that number, right now, this is what is happening in the building. Every single room is being used as a traditional K through five classroom with the following exceptions, music and art and two pre-K. Reading specialists are using the old workroom kitchenette as their workspace. Math specialists are entirely pushed in, and if they pull out, it's in the stage in the cafeteria. Focus has an office. She has a small little desk that she can limit to five students at a time. The computer lab is a kindergarten classroom. The paras use our principal and AP's office as a pull-out. There is no dedicated collaborative learning space in this class, in this school. If we take the 9:30 enrollment and add the additional seats you would get with the two pre-K that we have, the new number is 681, right? So that's where we would be. The new program capacity for Falmouth has it set 778 seats, an additional 97 seats. For Falmouth, you have to take into consideration, we have class size reduction, and those lower elementary classrooms are mandated class sizes. Due to the lack of any additional physical space, you are automatically forcing an increase at your upper elementary class sizes. Let me be clear, I don't think this is limited to Falmouth. I think the new program capacity figures affect every single school across our division. In fact, the following schools now have higher program capacity than the 2016 design capacity that they all threw out and said was wrong. These schools are Ferry Farm, Barrett, Garrisonville, Brett, Conway, Burns, Grafton, Rocky Run, Wide Water, Stafford, and Whining Creek all have higher capacities than they had in 2016 program, or design. We are setting up our elementary schools up to fail, and we cannot continue on this path. We are giving the consultant for the elementary redistricting faulty information, and the impacts are long-lasting. There is not one fiber of my being that believes economic makeup determines a school performance, but resources do. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Nordine. I live in the Hartwood District. Tonight, I should have signed up for the CIP sign-up sheet, but because I was running from one meeting to the next, I got here a little bit late, so I apologize. After tonight's meeting with the Board of Supervisors, I find myself concerned. Tonight, we, you said that after the new numbers have come out magically, we do not need elementary school number 18, and I feel like that is a complete understatement. If you've been in the schools, then you would know how stuffed they are. I have before you the new active building and zoning list. I have taken the time to add up all of the homes being built on each end of town. In our Hartwood District, we have 1,620 new homes. That's equivalent to the remaining Embry Mill community up for Whining Creek. Margaret Brent has 260 new houses. Ferry Farm has 300 new houses. When you factor in our growth to not do elementary school 18, to fill our schools to complete capacity, you're waiting too long. If we are completely at these astronomically high numbers that are higher than they were projected to be two years ago, so you're saying you can fit, for example, 660 kids in Hartwood, I would tell you no way, especially with our Title I status. That is not a possibility unless you're going to make fourth and fifth grade classrooms 45 students. It's not happening. We need new schools, and this is a great opportunity. You're building high school 18. If you could find a site where both an elementary and a high school could go on it, it's cost savings. The equipment's there, it's a higher bid, fewer roads. I just ask that you take into consideration, and consider that our teachers and all of these schools are overwhelmed by the amount of kids that we are going to cram into these spaces. It's not fair. So I ask that you please take a second look and think about the new CIP that you're going to write for our Board of Supervisors because it's important. Spend some time in your schools. Talk to the principals, talk to the teachers. Thank you and have a good night.
Hello. My name is Ash Grace. I attended Stafford County Public Schools from elementary school until graduating in 2006 and now reside in Richmond City. This is my second time speaking to this board, and I'm here today to show my support for Policy 2420. There are currently students desperately in need of our support and protection, which this policy can grant. I have witnessed what a person is capable of when supported and protected, and I have seen what happens when they are not. I'm not going to share the scary statistics of suicide among transgender children since the speakers before me have done so, but the reality is grim, and the numbers will continue to rise if there isn't action. As a queer woman, I often wonder what might have been different if I had been raised in an educational environment where equality was a given right and reality, and what may have been different for my trans colleagues and friends. As someone who frequently navigates inclusive spaces in Richmond, I've seen how inclusivity truly benefits all. Besides students, educators also need to feel secure in supporting all of their students without fearing negative consequences. I believe Stafford County can and will lead the way in demonstrating what equality truly is. Stafford County can be a safe, supportive, welcoming educational environment where all students can flourish. students can flourish and Policy 2420 is a necessary step in that direction. Thank you for your time and your consideration and this, of this important policy.
All right, that brings us to the end of our list of persons who have signed up. We still have time left, so if anyone else wants to address the board, please come forward when you finish. You can sign up on the sheet, on the podium there. Is that a new sheet for this hearing? Thank you. You changed your hat and your shirt.
You're very observant.
All right, before you start, Mr. Wodowsky, your clock hasn't started yet. Ms. Hall, how much time do we have left? Until five after, so we've got about fifteen minutes, which would give us enough for five speakers if we move quickly.
Paul Wodowsky, this is my friend Darryl and this is my other, his brother, Darryl. I brought you, like I did last year, you've all been naughty, I'm the Grinch, so I brought you some coal, but I'm taking it back so I can bring it next year. Now, if you're having math problems, I let some Tic Tac go. If you need some math lessons, I've got a whiteboard in my basement. Now, let me clear up some aspects for some of you people, because see, I have cicadas and I'm sure they're male, female, maybe transgender, I don't really know. I didn't know nothing about this policy proposal, 2420. And I'm pretty active in this county, so I think you need to spread the word somewhere. First of all, the word "feel" means that you're subjective. We need to be objective. This is not a state, it's the Commonwealth of Virginia, so please learn that. I'm from the state of New York. My kids are from the Commonwealth of Virginia, where common sense is not common. It just amazes me that you all don't know that we all bleed red and we all cry tears. So we're all human. And if you want to get into philosophies, Colossians 2:8 says, "Beware of the philosophies of men and not of things according to Christ." It's Colossians 2:8. It's got a numerical significance, two to the third power is eight. I challenge you to go to Niagara Falls about April fifteenth. You'll see an iceberg, which is water in the solid state. You'll see the falls, which is water in the liquid state, and you'll see the mist and go on the Maid of the Mist and it's representative of the Holy Spirit, Christ on earth and God the Father. But it's only one of the seven wonders of the world. But what do I know? We only have seven days in the week, which is a hundred and sixty-eight hours. Little bit of math for all of you. It just amazes me when I hear all these aspects of suicides and other aspects. When you see four bodies on a gurney, you know, during Vietnam, don't even, don't even challenge me about your concepts. There's a thing called a signal significant emotional event and we all experience them. My kids experienced nine eleven. I know about eleven twenty-two nineteen sixty-three. That's when John F. Kennedy was assassinated. I was in School Seventy on Buffam Street in West Seneca, New York. We used to use air raid drills. So I know about Lady Justice. She wears a blindfold, she's transparent, she doesn't wear a pirate's patch on either eye. Come on, boys, let's go.
Mr. Wodowsky? We want to know you live at Eight Picket Lane in the Rock Hill District. Thank you. Next.
Is that the time?
All right.
Let's, let him start.
Yes, if you could give us your, your name and address, please. You can sign in when you finish.
Okay, will do. Thank you. My name is John Peray and I live in Stafford Lakes. I have two children who attend Stafford County Schools. I have worked in healthcare for twenty years and consider myself a reasonable and caring person. I am trained to be objective when treating my patients and not to be discriminatory or biased. I am troubled and saddened with some of the statements here, that a simple difference of opinion is being painted as hatred, fear-based and causing suicides. My family has experienced transgender policy topics in the recent past at Hartwood Elementary. There, the decision-makers at that school decided to allow a transgender student to use the bathroom that reflected their gender identity without changing or voting on the policy. This was reversed and correctly so. Ironically, when that transgender issue first came to Hartwood, the Hartwood Elementary community accepted that student with open arms. When that student wanted to be called she, we all said okay. When that student wanted to dress as a girl to that dress code, we all said okay. When that girl wanted to join an exclusively girls group called Girl Smarts, where my daughter was, we said okay. We simply said no to the bathroom policy. In my eyes, that's called compromise. The current policy proposal uses several terms that are quite subjective. Here are a couple examples. And I quote, "Gender identity means a student's internalized sense of their own gender as female, male, a blend of both, or neither. A blend is unidentifiable and a concern of mine when it comes to be being measured." It also states that gender identity may be, and I quote, "demonstrated by the consistent and uniform assertion of a student's gender identity or other evidence that the student's gender identity is sincerely held as part of their core belief." Sincerely is also very subjective and unmeasurable. Does sincerity mean how deeply sincere they are? How long they've been sincere? Or some other open-ended measure? And if a student's gender identity has a blend of genders, which is more sincere than the other? And how is that measured? This policy goes on to say that it is intended to create a school culture that respects the values of all students. So if some students are uncomfortable with a student of a different sex in the same bathroom or locker room, are their rights being respected? A private, neutral gender bathroom for a transgender student to use is a reasonable compromise. I pray for peace and comfort for those students and families who are part of the transgender community. I pray for wisdom and guidance for this board and that they consider the rights and dignity of all students in connection with this policy. Lastly, I pray for all government officials that a spirit of compromise and fairness may wash over their decisions. Thank you very much.
If you could please sign in, we'd appreciate it.
What are y'all doing today? First time here. First time, I'll try to keep it short, okay? My name's Shannon Spillman. I live in Garrisonville Road. I prefer not to give everything out, but it's cool. I'm not actually against this policy, I'm not for this policy either. I think you guys need to re, kind of look into it a little bit more. You've done some great things with it, like, I'm cool if you want to use the bathroom in your, whatever, that's, it is what it is. Everybody should have the right to pee. It's cool. What I have a problem with is you want to re-educate my child. I don't, I'm not okay with that. I remember being a boy going into middle school and sixth grade was when we, you know, decided that we had to wear jeans, you know, shorts for gym class and a shirt and stuff like that and I was kind of uncomfortable. Not gonna lie. Now, no, I'm not that way. I just run around, do what I want. But then I was uncomfortable with it. So now you're putting another scenario into that system that they're already uncomfortable with. But when they are uncomfortable with it, you're saying you're gonna re-educate them and move them to a different area for them to change? Where are you gonna put them at? The closet? I, I mean, I don't understand where, enlighten me on that one. That's where I think you need to really look at it again, because in honesty, when I came up here, I was one hundred percent against this. Like, when I first got here, I, I mean, I, I got here as soon as I could. I was a little late. But I was against this. But that little girl that came up here, dude, she's a champ. Like, one hundred percent. Like, I might cry right now. Champ! I'm not against this policy, but I think you need to relook at that. Why are we re-educating the kid? Because they feel uncomfortable. You're talking about equality between transgenders and regular students. Well, we're all regular students. But why are you singling out the many for the few? Why can't we? I, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't have an answer for you, because I'm, I'm looking at you, because I'm pretty sure you're the one that wrote it. I'm not trying to signal you out or nothing like that, but that's what it is. I'm not against this at all. I've talked to my family, I've talked to my friends at work, I've talked to everybody. I came down here today to be like, nah, dude, I'm done, this is, this is ridiculous. Why, why are we even having this discussion? But if you can fix that one aspect of it, I think we can move to the right way. You just gotta look at how it is. And as for the whole, like, the school thing, not having that extra elementary school, man, that's crazy. Y'all need that. Like, I, I, I got kids that go to this thing. That's, I mean, I'm, y'all bought that North Star or Head Start thing that's going on, right? Hey, good job, because my mom's a Head Start teacher. That, that's awesome, I love it. But do the, please get the elementary school and please look at that a little bit more. Like, that's one thing. That guy in the plaid, dude, you, you're my hero, bro. You, you said some great things. Like, that was awesome. Because he's right. It's not about them going to the bathroom. As for the whole thing that happened with the kid not going during the active shooting thing, man, y'all need to look at that staff at that one. That was their fault. I'm out, that's my beep. Y'all have fun.
Sign in.
Don't forget to sign in.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Shaw McGuire. I'm with the Family Foundation of Virginia and I just want to quickly address two concerns we have with the proposed gender expression and inclusion policy. First of all, this is a policy that's similar to a policy adopted in West Point High School and School Board there, that resulted in a good teacher being fired for his refusal to use a male pronoun to describe a transgender student in violation of his deeply held religious convictions. This policy here would also lead to similar situations and coerce teachers against their convictions to speak messages they don't agree with. This has opened West Point up to litigation. Second concern is out of Decatur, Decatur, Georgia. I noticed a board member has the same name. There was a student there who was physically and sexually assaulted in a bathroom. It is now an open question under federal investigation as to whether a policy similar to this one led to that sexual misconduct. It's not a closed question. These are questions that need to be addressed and answered and I urge you, therefore, to delay on this policy before those questions are addressed. This policy has serious constitutional and civil liability concerns and for these reasons, I ask you to delay today. Thank you.
Where are we on our time, Ms. Hall?
This is the last one.
No, you're, you're, well, unless you talk very quickly, you're the last one. We've got three minutes left. Great. But you've got three minutes if you want to take them.
Thank you. My name's Rachel Greiner. I live at Three Newport Court in Austin Ridge. I just want to say that my husband and I have read 2420 in its entirety. We fully support it. So my husband and I moved to Stafford with a fantastic community and excellent schools. We have two very young daughters that are just the absolute greatest blessing in our life. I want to assure the board that we have zero concerns about transgender students sharing gender-specific facilities with our children and fully support the policy. Research demonstrates that this does not create an environment for them to be emotionally damaged, physically harmed or swayed in any way. We believe that it actually does the opposite. It proves that Stafford takes the concerns, safety and well-being of all students into consideration and that equality is a pillar of our school system. Passing 2420 will show them that all students are valued and that the school is open and accepting to all differences. Thank you very much.
All right, that leaves us time for one more speaker. Does anyone else like to address the board? This, this will be the last speaker.
You have to pass the bathroom.
Hi, my name is Sarah McClellan. I live in the George Washington District. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Kizner and the board for creating this fabulous, fabulous policy. I, I think it's been a long time coming and I'm glad we're making progress, so I'd like to thank you all for that. I didn't have any prepared remarks, so my statement is going to be not very polished, but I just had a couple of thoughts as I was listening to various comments. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm basically on the psychiatric front lines here in this county for a long time, since 2001. I've seen lots of kids try to kill themselves in lots of different ways. I would like to do anything to prevent those children from having to go through those sorts of experiences. So what I'd like to say is that we're not indoctrinating children to become transgender. If you look at research, you'll see that, you can find information, that brain scans show that children that are transgender, excuse me, this is an emotional topic for me, have gender identity markers in their brain. Not biology, gender identity. It's not something that someone just decides to do because they've had a conversation with their parent or seen somebody in a locker room. So I'd like for us to keep that in mind. With regards to comments against this policy, to me, it's just summarized very succinctly as fear of others. We've had a long history of fear of others. Fear of things that don't really make much sense in our history. For example, a long time ago in the eighteen hundreds, society was afraid of street lighting. Society believed that street lights would create a healthcare crisis because it would keep people up past their bedtime. I think not enforcing this policy would be just as ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Point of privilege, Madam Chair, five minutes.
Not the public hearing, the public comment period. All right, five minutes. We will start at exactly nine twelve. With or without you, Mr. McAllister. Assuming we got four of us. Get a long night. Comments?
Let her sit down there. She's coughing too much tonight.
You want a mint? There's mints in your, in your cookie jar. Maybe the mint will help you.
Are the librarians here tonight?
Any more water? Do we have any more water?
All right, well, if I'm gonna... All right, well, I will get it started.
I would like to say to everybody that we have a...
Can somebody grab those doors, please?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
I'd like to wish everybody a wonderful and safe holiday season. There's so many wonderful things going on in our schools. I hope, I hope we, as parents, can support them, and if we're here as community members, we find out ways that we can give and support our students throughout, throughout our division. I know, and there may be an official statement, Mr. Dr. Kizner may be giving it, but I know that the board will certainly want to express our condolences on the, to A.J. Gibson and the King George community on his death on our, in our school system. I cannot imagine that pain, but I do know the amazing people that we have in this division who care for our students every day, those who are here as our students and ours that are here by invitation. And I just would like to thank all those who provided support to that family and to that situation, and to those who grieve today and, and, and forward. So, I think that that is one wonderful thing about our communities. We are a really wonderful and caring community, and I hope that during the holidays, we will continue that wonderful way, and also, of course, into 2019. I am looking forward to our next year. I think we have a lot of big decisions coming, but I think the main thing I would say to everybody is remember, this is your school district. These are your kids. These are your neighbors' kids. These are somebody's, there's always somebody's kids. Get involved and stay involved in the school system in whatever way. And if you have questions, if you have, oh, you know, please let us know, because there are a lot of ways you can get involved to give, not just during this season, but throughout 2019. And if any of you have served with me on any PTO committees, you know I will sign you up for something. So, if you call me, you will be on a committee. So, please call, because I'd love to get you on there. And a shout out to any students for our advisory committees. We love student members. That is such a great input, especially on our fine arts committee. You don't have to sing. I don't. But we would love to have you especially on that committee, which I can speak to. Again, have a wonderful holiday season and see you all in 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Hasser, Ms. Decatur.
Hi, guys. I don't have a lot to say tonight. Start with Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. You, you don't need to get ready. I'm gonna be a little minute. I, I just want to take a minute to commend you guys. I thought that this was going to be an absolute bloodbath. When I, you first started the public comment, I'm just, I'm just being honest. There were, like, people standing up and cheering, and then there was another side and people standing up and cheering. But then, as the evening progressed, I watched this room kind of come together and find a common ground, whether or not you believe that happened. I sat up here and watched all of it and watched your faces. And I want to, I want to commend you. We are a community, and I would ask for your continued prayers for us sitting up here, because this is not an easy job. We have a lot of people to take care of and a lot of people to do right by. And not everyone agrees on what right means, and I don't expect you to, but I, I do ask for your thoughts and prayers as we move forward as a board to decide that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur. We're gonna go down to Ms. Egan next. We'll get back to you.
So, I just want to echo Holly's comments about A.J. Gibson and to thank the Brookpoint High School community for handling it the way that they had, and everybody at Central Office who, who ran out to, to support Tammy and her staff and all this. Thank you. Also want to thank all of our librarians for my dinner tonight. Got off the train and came right here, and I had a couple of peanut butter cookies, and they were delicious. So, thank you. I don't always get to eat them, because I take them home, and my kids devour them before I even had a chance to have one or two, so I beat them to it. That's all I really have, and just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and we'll see you in the new year. Thanks.
All right. Now, we'll go to Ms. Young. I'm just making sure everybody's alert and awake.
Well, thank you so much. Okay, well, I also thank the librarians for the cookies, and happy holidays to everyone and to all our students. My heart also goes out to the King George family that lost their loved one during the game here in one of our schools. I also wanted to, I, I have, I have a little bit, just, you know, just hold on. You know, we went through all of that for 73 minutes, so I'm taking my five minutes. All right? Just want you to know.
I thought we had three.
I was at the CTE advisory meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there was a special presentation. I love talking about when I see kids coming and being part of the meetings. So, we had two Brookpoint High School students, Jared Ness and Nebu Jabaz, along with their advisor, Mr. Jeff Timmerman. They presented on the Virginia Star Program, which began in 2015. So, they refurbish and donate computers at no cost to those in need, whether it's families, nonprofit organization, or school district. And the program is partnered with SERV, Germana College, AXS, Humphrey Management, Rappahannock United Way, and Stafford Junction and NSF. The school system welcomed three legislators during the month of November whom visited our schools. Delegate Mark Cole visited Hartwood, Delegate Jennifer Carroll-Foy enjoyed the visit with Whitewater, and Delegate Thomas's presence was felt at Grafton Village. My school board members, Holly, Sarah, and I, we thank the Board of Supervisor, Jack Cavalier, for visiting Whitewater with us. He has history in that school. And as a team, legislators, the school system, and both boards, we want to build strong relations between the school system and Virginia General Assembly to move our county school system forward. This past several months, board members attended the yearly VSBA. This is the Virginia School Board Member Association. I met several other members and leaders in their respective counties. One interesting contact I made was with a company owner whom I will be meeting this week, and my plan is to increase the number of careers and internships after graduation and during the year also. On 12/5, school board had a redistricting community meeting. Thank you, Dr. Kizner and Matt Townsend, for answering the audience questions. We want to keep our communities well informed and want to ensure they can give input along the way. We will have other work sessions and town hall meetings in the coming year that can be found on the website. Lastly, we also had a work session on AP Advanced Placement Program, IB, which is the International Baccalaureate and Commonwealth Governors, commonly known as the CGS. Just want to make sure that all students whom are able to excel in these programs get an opportunity to do so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Chase.
Well, so I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I'd also like to thank the librarians for the wonderful cookies. I wanted to acknowledge Cherie Johnson and her staff for doing a great job of putting together Take Your Legislator to School Month in November, and want to thank Supervisors Cavalier, Delegates Thomas, Cole, and Foy for taking the time to visit Stafford County Public Schools and to hear what we are getting right and about some of the challenges that we're facing. It was also educational for me. I loved seeing the CSOW program firsthand. It was good to hear about the School Protection Officer Pilot Program and how it's working at Hartwood. It sounds like it's going well, and I hope it continues to go well, and that the county will be able to provide additional funds to expand the program to our other 15 elementary schools. Last week, I attended the redistricting information session presented by Arkbridge and Dr. Kizner and Mr. Townsend. It was very informative. And I wanted to say that I have now visited 12 of our 17 elementary schools over the last 11 months, and I'm planning to visit the last five over the next month. And I can honestly say that I think all of our elementary schools are great. And I hope, once we get our redistricting plans settled, we can have some open house events for families who are being redistricted, so that they can see that their new school, while different, will also be really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McOster.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks again for the best cookie basket in Virginia. Librarians, love you guys, and you folks, and thanks for the, making each night, once a year, pretty nice, nice and very, which is a very thoughtful gift. A great discussion tonight. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more to follow, so both sides had awesome points. This is our last meeting in the year, so make sure that the kids are safe and we get them back safely. Sometimes we've got to close school, and I got a lot of emails on that for icy conditions. Remember, if, you know, Acquah Harbor is, all the buses are sliding down the slopes of Acquah Harbor, then we're probably gonna, it's probably gonna reverberate even to my neighborhood, which is perfectly safe. And so, we have those, the certain roads in the county that buses just can't traverse when it's, when it's icy and it's overhang of trees, and it's just a bad, it's a bad scene. And remember, it was years ago that we did lose children on a, on a ice, on an icy road, right? So, that's, that's something that we don't want to do, and we don't take lightly closing school. And I know Dr. Kizner and the, and the, and Mr. Haran and the, and the team with Fire and Emergency Services are doing what they, we're supposed to do. Lastly, hey, thanks for the comments tonight. Again, and this is from the staff that usually comes here and gives comments. Whether I like them or not, I listen to them. If you mention Ferry Farm as Boards of Supervisors, and everybody else knows, you might get blasted if I don't, if I don't like what you're gonna say. So, that's just how it is. And my stance hasn't changed.
Ferry Farm.
Yeah, and my, and my, and my stance hasn't changed in, in seven years on that issue. And so, maybe you just stopped listening, but good discussions, whether, like I said, whether I like it or not. Keep, keep the comments coming, and, because, you know, it takes a team to make these hard decisions for the school board and the students of this county. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McOster. And I will be the last to add my thanks to the librarians. And not only are they good, it's a beautiful package, beautiful package. Are there any librarians here with us? No, they're probably all home getting ready for
Tired.
School tomorrow morning. We, we do hope we're gonna have school tomorrow morning. Do we, I mean, just... Well, just remember, it's going to be a short summer, so we want to enjoy it, enjoy it now, but we will pay...
We'll see you back in August.
All right. I want to wish everyone a happy holidays. It's, it's coming up so quickly. Just amazing how fast this, this semester has gone by. And I want to thank all the speakers who were here tonight and the people who came to support them. It is, it is very refreshing to see respectful comments, and people can agree to disagree. And I, I know this is going to be a very challenging issue before the board, and I, I do look forward to, to, to more comments. You're not restricted to just coming to make public comments. You're free to send emails. And I suggest, if you want an email to go to all of the board members, you send it to our clerk, Melissa Hall, and then she can share it with, with all of us, or you can put all of our names on the, the email as well. But it is important that we, we hear from the community. This is, this is an issue that, that was here before. It's here today, you know, maybe here, you know, once again in the future. So, we, we need to hear from the community, particularly the Stafford community, because this is a Stafford County Superintendent-proposed policy. I just wanted to let the board know that the FOIA training, which I'm sure everyone is looking forward to, has been rescheduled for our retreat day of January 12th. And no, it's not going to extend the day. We're gonna fit it in, you know, the schedule we already had. So, something to look forward to in, in the new year. Wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season. Dr. Kizner.
Okay. So, 4:30 this morning, there was a team of six people already up trying to figure out what we should be doing for today. And I do want to recognize two people that are not here, Barry Sutter and Greg Martin. And I know they have two other members and who drive the roads. I drive the telephone and the coffee maker, and then they feed me information. I want to thank Cherie, and it's because she's up also at the same time coordinating efforts. And as, as already stated, Stafford's a big place, so what might look pretty good on the northern part may not look as good on the southern part and so on. So, I do want to thank the public, the emails and texts, I only read the ones who are positive, and people have been positive. The other ones, I'm figuring they just sent it to the wrong person. The other thing I wanted to quickly mention, so I think tonight's discussion with the Board of Supervisors was good, very good, very interesting. I would like to offer, when, when we talk about the capital plan, some suggestions that I, that I personally struggle with. I think our numbers and our narrative are not aligned, you know? We're, we're saying on one hand, 100%, and I brought up maybe the 85, 90% because our numbers would suggest one thing about when a new elementary school would be needed. The reality might suggest something else. So, I look forward to working with you on that. You know, I'm, I'm gonna stop saying I'm new. I don't know when the new part ends, but I'm, I feel like I've been here long enough to realize that we got to get a hold of this, okay? And maybe take another approach to the way we do it. The other thing, I'll just, maybe you're already aware of this, but Stafford, through the Virginia School Board Association, we received a platinum certified Green School Division. So, that's something you should be proud of, that we're showing good evidence of being energy efficient, and not only is that good for our environment and teachers' children, but there's a savings to that. So, I congratulate you and all, everybody else. And again, I wish everyone, although I feel like I'll see you at least five more times between that with Christmas break, I wish all of you, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Mr. McOster just said he contributed to that energy savings from the facilities that aren't working down at Ferry Farms and using that electricity. The action items, 12.01, approve North Star Early Childhood Center as the name for the new early childhood special education and Headstart Northern Campus. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve North Star Early Childhood Center as the name for the new early childhood special education and Headstart Northern Campus.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
First, I'll start with a statement. The North Star Early Childhood Center sounds like a daycare facility. Why is the word "education" not in the title? North Star Early Childhood Education Center. I don't want to be confused with Mini Land up the street. Was there any reason that was omitted from the title of the school, the name of the school? school?
Ms. Massey? Do we call it?
Well, I don't recall any discussion of that at the meeting. Do you, Ms. Young?
No.
The committee meetings?
No, there was no discussion of adding the word "education." There was no pro or con, because it was not brought up.
Is anybody opposed to inserting the word "education"?
I'm not.
You oppose?
No, I'm fine with it.
Oh, oh, okay. What do you want, the word "education"?
So, would it be North Star Early Childhood Education Center?
Correct. Because the way it stands now, it just sounds like it's another one of the Miniland or one of the other...
I don't have a problem with that. I think that sounds good.
Okay, Ms. Young, would you be willing to amend the motion to
Sure.
Include that in the name?
Yes, so I amend the motion.
Dr. Chase, would you accept that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment that's been accepted
I'll support it.
By the first and second. So, what we will be voting on is the North Star Early Childhood Education Center as the name for the former Fredericksburg Christian School.
Right.
All right, any other discussion?
I have to say, I still like the Palmer Hayden one, just because I like the history of that individual. I mean, I have to say, since so many of our schools are named about people that are associated with Stafford, I have to say, there's, in my heart, my preference is that one. I think North Star is a nice name, but to me, I think Ms. Egan's addition of "education" at least gets me further, because I too felt like, when I first read it, it could be Miniland, and we want to make sure that we are a Stafford County school.
And no offense to our friends at Miniland.
No, no, but I mean, it's a different service.
I thought that was a free advertisement.[722.41][722.41](Laughter)
Ms. Massey, we're done with you. You're welcome to sit down if you want.
I mean, if that is what the recommendation of the committee was, and there is, you know, this is what is really tied, that that's what the committee really wants, I will go with it. But I have to say, from my perspective, I will say that my preference, because I really enjoyed that story and love that. So, but it appears that it is unanimous, and I would not want to hurt that.
Well, I am gonna make it a unanimous vote, but I did prefer the second option, just for the record. I would agree. I think adding Early Childhood Education Center really helps me. I didn't know what it was about that name. I can appreciate it a little more now, so it's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna support this, because it was unanimous on the committee. And the Palmer Hayden was, you know, a second choice, and I think that part of that was the balance with Gary Meltzer's and Palmer Hayden, and with Mr. Hayden being from the Wildwater area. But since the committee, you know, decided unanimously, was it not, Ms. Young, won the North Star, I'm gonna support that. All right, so no further discussion. All in favor of the motion to name the North Star Early Childhood Education Center? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. 12.02, approve the renewal of an annual maintenance and support contract with EduPoint Education Systems for the Synergy Student Information System in the amount of $208,878 in budgeted FY-19 funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the annual maintenance and support contract with EduPoint.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 12.03, approve the award of a service contract to Corbett Technology Solutions, Inc. of McCannsville, Virginia, in the amount of $202,900 using budgeted FY-19 operating funds for the installation of emergency notification strobe lights in all school cafeterias.
Motion to approve 12.03.
Motion by Ms. Egan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment. Healy, I will be supporting this. However, I would like to note that the FY-19 security-related upgrades, the safety and security audit was something that was very, very, very important to me. And I see that, as of this time, we're just developing the RFP. I am going to defer to my board in this, but in the future, I would really like to have had that RFP and to have had the findings of that audit done before we approve these projects, just because I would like an independent. This is not my area. I don't want it to be. But I would like to see if there is some way that we can get that safety and security audit moving.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve item number 12.03? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 12.04, approve the Superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 12.04.
All right, motion by Ms. Egan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Sorry, I will make it quick. One thing that really struck me in the policy 14.04 is that the Board shall annually renew
14.04?
It said policy, oh, 14.04? I thought I read it correctly.
Yeah, you probably did.
The Board shall review annually the accreditation status of each school in a public session of the Board. I will tell you, I never remembered that as being part of our policy, and I would like to ask our clerk to make sure that we put that on some calendar to make sure that we do meet that, because I know we always announce that we have accreditation, but I'm not sure we really talk about it. And I think that, I think that's what the
Well, I don't think, if you think that says "talk about it," it just says "shall review annually." If you want to change it to something more specific, you can. But I think when the Superintendent, you know, makes the announcement about the accreditation of the schools, and there's any chance for discussion, that would certainly qualify for review. But if you want to make it more specific, we could think about that.
I guess I would be curious from the Superintendent if that is what this is. Then I think the Superintendent should announce the accreditation. But to me, this seems like the Board shall review annually, and I feel that that's something on us.
Well, the Board would only, I mean, in
I mean, I don't want another responsibility.
No, no, no. This would not be your responsibility. I think what you're stating is the Board, staff would present to you the accreditation. How would you guys get the accreditation, except by asking us? So, I mean, you do whatever you want to do. If you guys want to do all the homework and figure out the accreditation...
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, it isn't brought to us in a public session. It is just announced.
That's fine. I'll be happy. Matter of fact...
I'm not trying, I'm just trying to make sure we're meeting this.
I totally agree with you, that I've actually, I even commented to my staff that we should be proud of our accreditation. I'm surprised there's no formal presentation. So, I'd be happy to do a formal, will be happy to do a formal presentation, when they come out in, you know, around August to start the school year in September. I did make an announcement last meeting that we were fully accredited, because I didn't want us to
Yeah, remember.
I didn't want us to lose sight of that. But I think what you're asking for is not only reasonable, I think the public has a right to know.
So, I mean, I really wasn't trying, but I think that if we have stuff to brag about, my goodness. And then I had one other comment, just for your follow-up.
I may not agree on two things.
I know. Hey, and we didn't even talk about that one. On 23.01, and this is just something for you all to clarify, we've had some issues in the past about data for doctoral work and how that is to be approached with you. All I would just like to say is just making sure that that is clear to our employees. We've had some concerns in the past of how emails were sent to get data
To IT person.
To get data, and there was some confusion about who it came from. So, I just, that's just more of a, on your, as many of our students. And then with 36.02, when we are not, when we are, is the change to allowing the other for a student's race or ethnicity, sorry, does that undermine us getting any of the data that we are trying to make sure we are meeting the needs of our students? If you say no, I'm good with this.
Matter of fact, this is a requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Okay. I apologize. I just needed to understand.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve 12.04? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to information items. 13.01, approve the award of a service contract to Precision Door and Hardware of Fredericksburg, Virginia, in the amount of $143,985 using FY-19 operating funds for the installation of additional card readers at all schools. Any questions about this?
Just my same comment, just my same comment on the audit. Let's get it done.
I just want to confirm, though, is this the savings that we've had that we're using? I thought there was some savings with the card reader? Is that, is this not it? No, okay. No, no, I was looking at Matt. He just said no. Okay, that's fine. Me, no, Chris. Sorry. Got mad on my mind.
The young guys, huh?
Yeah, oh, yeah.[1218.41][1218.41](Laughter)
Any other questions?
Why are you telling my secret? What's wrong with you?
I'm gonna leave that alone.
13.02, approve the Superintendent's proposed new policy 24, gender identity and expression. This is on for information. Under our traditional schedule, it will come back for information at the next meeting and be on for action at the end of January, unless there's some desire of the Board to, you know, have a different schedule. So, does anyone want to make any comments on this this evening?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, because I've, as you know, I started a new job, and I've been a little bit disengaged. So, just a couple, I understand that this was conceived and germinated in the Diversity Committee. Is that correct, the policy?
Well, I think
To a certain extent.
I think last year, this is a topic that the Equity Committee, Diversity Committee, was interested. I've only had one, actually, we have a meeting Thursday night. They're aware that a policy was coming forward, but I think this is a continuation of last year's interest.
Okay. Has the final product been vetted through all of our principals, since it's going to be impacting their, it hasn't? What about your teacher advisory group?
No. I intentionally wanted the school board to be the first group to see it.
Okay, so then your parent advisory group didn't see it either?
Correct.
Okay. And the, it says here that the policy was developed in consultation with outside counsel. I'm assuming that they drafted the policy?
Correct.
Okay. So, has there been an independent set of legal eyes, aside from the person who developed this? Was there another attorney that looked at it, that wasn't involved in it, that looked at it with pure legalese-based?
Yeah, so we had two attorneys work on it.
Was it in the same firm, or?
Same firm.
Okay.
I don't want to say he played a role of an attorney, but Darryl was very instrumental working with us on this, and that's the process.
Okay. And then, a question for, that relates back to the CIP discussions, when we were gearing up to get ready to submit our list, and we discussed the three Rs list and all that other stuff. Some emails were bounced back and forth, and I sent an email to you and to the rest of the Board, and I hope somebody can confirm that they received the email, asking about what the cost would be to turn some of our, maybe one set of bathrooms in our high schools and middle schools into non-gender specific, and
I confirm.
Thank you. I didn't get an answer from anybody. I kind of was hoping that the Fab was going to take it up and talk about it and have it as a topic of discussion. And as far as I know, it's not, it wasn't discussed by anybody. So, can I just ask why I didn't get a response to my question?
I don't know. I don't remember the email not saying we didn't receive it.
I recall the email. I don't respond to questions to all Board members, because I want to make sure I'm not violating the FOIA laws.
Understand.
And you will never get a response to me where it's going to everybody.
Sure. But I think it was more directed at Dr. Kizner and staff, as per the CIP development discussion, and I didn't get anything back. So, I just wanted to make clear that everybody got it and saw it. That's, so I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments this evening?
I just had a little question from actually reading the policy, but also hearing people's comments. Could you provide a little clarification on this concern that the school system is going to try to indoctrinate students in terms of forced counseling on students, or something along that line?
Yeah, so, that's absolutely not true. Anytime a student has a concern, it could be a concern about peer relationships, it could be a concern about abusive behavior in the home, it could be a concern about drinking, it could be a concern about moving, it could be a concern about the death of a grandparent, death of a parent, death of a pet. We offer that student the opportunity, if they bring it up, because if you read the policy, it says if they bring it up, for counseling. That's why we have school counselors, okay? The notion that I think some people might feel, which is completely inaccurate, is that if there's a transgender student and you have a problem with it, we are going to make you go to counseling. So, you go ahead and now could either begin to like the transgender student, or figure out what's wrong with you. And that's not at all the intent.
Do you think that could be clarified in the policy?
I think that could be clarified, because obviously, if people are bringing it up with confusion, then it needs to be clarified. Yeah. And I do want, you know, while we're clarifying, because I think this is important for the public. The other thing that was mentioned, I think the policy is pretty clear on it. Couple of comments, at least one comment was made, that a student could decide that day that they're transgender. This policy has took great effort to make sure there is a, I guess, accountability on determining if a student is transgender, qualifies. And that does not allow a student to say, "Today, I'm transgender. I want to use the boys' or girls' bathroom." So, I just want to make sure you see that part of the policy, okay?
Ms. Young?
One of my comments is that, if I'm on the team, I want to win. So, I just want to make sure on the other team, they don't have somebody that has more estrogen or testosterone than me. So, are we allowing individuals to be on that team?
The VSHL, now I'm talking high school now, VSHL governs which students or how students are determined to be on a team. There is a process they use. And again, if a student has been properly identified as transgender, then that student, by VSHL, which we follow, are allowed to be on that team, okay?
Okay. So, that's not us, that's the Virginia High School League.
Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question again about that counseling. We have, or at least when my child was in the earliest years, there was the Family Life Program, and the parents had an opportunity to opt out. At the beginning of the year, you could sign a form saying you, you know, you chose not to have your child participate. Would there be a potential opportunity for that here? Because, you know, I think there's some basis for concern on the part of parents. I mean, there's certain things that are within the realm of responsibility of parents, and not necessarily the schools. I mean, that concerns me to a certain extent. But if a parent could choose not to have that counseling, you know, a child that's 18, they're legally an adult, and they can make their own decisions. But for minors, would that be, and maybe you don't have an answer, but I think it's something to explore.
I just want to give you my initial thoughts, okay? Again, this is when I get myself in trouble, but you've asked
Well, maybe you ought to talk to the lawyers.
No, I don't think this is a lawyer, I don't think this is a lawyer.
Okay. End of my free advice.[1734.63][1734.63](Laughter)
Advice from a lawyer.
I'll just, I'm just tell you how my leadership guidance would be. We absolutely never want to take the primary role of a parent, but we serve in the role of a parent when a child's in school. And we would, obviously, for a younger child, handle it much different than a 15, 17, or 18-year-old. If a parent makes it clear to us, and again, I'm just, we've heard some comments tonight that I respect, and I wrote this whole thing, I was prepared to read, but it's not going that direction.
Yet.
What's that?
Yet.
Yet, and I'm
The night is young.
I guess what I'm saying is this, where, my concern is that we're kind of labeling transgender as something that's like dangerous, and we shouldn't be talking about it. And when we, we have children that And when we, we have children that come to speak to their school counselors about things that they would not talk to their parents about, every single day, every single day. And when we prevent that child to do that, I just ask you, what is the next issue? Is it going to be alcoholism? Is it going to be financial stress? Is it going to be father hitting mother? And I'm just, I don't want to, I don't, so, yes, you could say a policy, and I don't know how we define it, that the schools will not talk to children about transgender. I would just say as an educator, that might confuse the situation even more. Why am I not able, now, I think a good process might be, child brings it up, remember, we're not initiating it. Child brings it up, we contact the parents, we try to have a meeting with everybody involved. I could, very comfortable with that, and I think that's very age appropriate at the elementary level. So, you know, we, you could do whatever you want. If you want to opt out on the conversation about transgender, that's, that's your prerogative. I would just suggest that that might be more confusing to that young person, why can't I talk about it? Okay? Remember, they're initiating it, but I feel very comfortable to say, bring in all the stakeholders. The primary parents, the main parents, the only parents. Well, we, you know, we serve a role of parent, that's the law, in loco parentis. I mean, that's what, that's why we have requirements that we have to abide by. So, that, that area I know has been a lightning rod, from what I could tell. So, I will work with, with the attorney to see if there's a way of clarifying or softening the language. But I, I think, again, I'm not sure it's really being interpreted by the intent. The intent was, some kid was coming to their school counselor, concerned about an issue, and like any other issue, and wanted to address it. To me, this policy is a, I'll just read this one, one section of my five paragraph statement. Because I, you know, I put myself out here for the right reason to do this, okay? I recognize this is not an easy topic for many communities. I respect the comments and opinions I've already heard from many of you and those I will continue to hear. As superintendent, I took an oath to follow the laws, which include prohibiting harassment and discrimination of any type. As an educational leader, I have a responsibility to raise concerns and provide solutions when I feel harassment and discrimination has or may occur. So, I am raising the concern. You as a board, I will respect whatever decision you decide. I also want to remind us, the reason we're here is not because what happened a couple of months ago, but we should not forget that this policy is finally giving what we heard that night some clarity. It should not be dependent on a particular principal or teacher, how we address this matter, okay? It should be consistent and standardized throughout the school division. And I think this policy is more geared towards helping the staff to understand their role and responsibility, and the entire policy includes parents. And where I was very proud of our attorneys, and after doing a lot of reading, is that we're also very aware that those who might not be gender identity expression qualified also have protections in that policy. So, I, obviously, I send you a policy, and now the board could amend it, could change it, could, could just not accept it, but I, I feel an obligation to do what I think is right.
And I'm not saying it's, it's right or wrong, I'm saying I have some, I have some concerns about placing the schools, the counselors particularly, in the role of the parents. And I, I, I don't, you know, I, I see the schools as the educators, and the parents as the parents. So, I, there is a line, and I know, and I remember when, you know, my daughter was in elementary school, you know, you could choose, and that was fine. If you chose to have your children, you know, participate in that family life, you could
But family life is, is a completely different curriculum, you're right.
Well, it's a different curriculum, but it was a curriculum that we, we gave the choice to the families, and we gave the choice to the parents. I'm, I'm just, I'm asking this because I don't want, you know, I, I don't want something to fail because of
Right, I understand.
You know, a potential flaw that, that may be able to be addressed. And I, I think that we've, we've heard a lot of good comments tonight, you know, from, from both sides of the issue. And I think we need to, we need to take those comments, we need to consider them, and we need to look at, you know, is there a way to, to craft this policy so that it meets the needs of most? It's not going to meet everybody's needs because, you know, this, this is not an issue that I don't think everybody will agree on, but if we can do what's, what's, what's best for the, the children, but, but also the families, because this is a community, this is a community issue. I, I heard a comment, and I don't usually make notes, but, you know, it, it hit me. We don't want this to fly under the, the holiday radar. I think, you know, that, to me, was, was significant. And it, it made me think about the redistricting. We, we had an information meeting, we're going to have, what, three? Three meetings at different schools throughout the county, different sections of the county. We're going to have at least one public hearing, and we've already talked, or at least I voiced my concern about having the public hearing before the meeting where we're making a decision, you know, going, going forward on that. But, you know, the redistricting is, of course, a very critical matter. It affects, you know, potentially fifteen thousand students, and there were thirteen, whatever, fourteen, thirteen, eight hundred, whatever the number is now, students and their families. But this particular policy would affect all twenty-seven thousand of our students and, and, you know, our entire community. So, I, I think it's just something, and I'm, I'm voicing my thoughts right now, but I'm thinking that perhaps we need to do more than just put it on the agenda tonight, put it on the agenda on, you know, the first meeting in January and then vote on it. Because I, you know, I would like to have more, more input. And I was here years ago, Ms. Hazard was here, I don't know, were you here, Mr. McOscar, when this, this issue came up? You know, and, and the board, it was a tough decision then, and the board made a decision, you know, it's, it's always going to be a difficult decision, it's, but, you know, I feel that personally, I would like to, to have more of an opportunity to hear from the community, and perhaps we can make it a, a better policy.
Well, I, I have no problem delaying this to a longer period of time, get input. I, I would just make one last comment. When you have policies that address harassment and discrimination, you're doing it for a minority group. Okay? Why do we have laws and accommodations for people with disabilities? For English language learners, you could pick your group, okay? So, even though we say it's for all twenty-seven thousand, the policy is, is not really, in a way, designed specifically for all twenty-seven thousand. It's because there's a class of students in our school division that at least some of us have a concern that they may be discriminated and harassed against. So, I do have a little concern of holding a forum like we're doing for the redistricting, and, and so the public knows, this process of putting it on the agenda is the way you do policies. Okay? You, you do two readings and you do a policy. You don't have to agree to, to vote on it next month, I'm not even suggesting it. I think more public input is definitely warranted, but I don't want anybody to think we were just sneaking it in, in December.
Yeah, I'm not, it was just a comment that came up and it, it made an impression on me, that's all. And I, I've said enough, but I'm going to go down and see.
Well, Madam Chair, just with all due respect to Dr. Kizner, there's, usually when something is brought to us, all of the work has already been done. We don't get anything that's typically raw, and this was raw. It wasn't, it wasn't, it, you didn't, you have advisory committees for a reason. So, it would have behooved you to sit with your parent and your, and your teacher advisory committees and kind of do a pow-wow and bring us something that we could chew on. This is, this is too raw for, for, for me, anyway. That's all.
We'll, we'll go this way, is that all right?
I don't care. You can go each, any way you want.
Go ahead.
We'll go back and forth.
I guess my first comment overall is, most of you know I like phrases, but, you know, what unites us is greater than what divides us. And I do believe we as a board, and I believe even the community that I heard tonight, is we're united on doing what's best for all the students in our care, in our buildings, in our programs. I, I do believe that. How we get there, I think that's what we're going to be struggling with. Some of the things that I will, I will need, or, sorry, would like more information and thought on because I do like information before making any major decisions, is I do want to hear the input from our administrators, teachers, and counselors in our elementary schools, our middle schools, and, and high schools, because they're the ones that are on the front line. It is not me that's going to be in the school when something comes up. They may be able to give us and instruct us on how they believe things should go. I believe many times best practices do come from within our own division, and I think that's a piece I would like to have some more understanding. I would like to see a copy of the VHSL policy. I apologize, I don't know what it is, but I would like to see it, just because I'd like to see it. I also think something, because this will be in every one of our buildings, I have heard concerns from across the spectrum about the accessibility of the facilities we are talking about, bathrooms. Are they accessible, or is it in the wrong wing, is it here? I just want to have an idea. Let's not pass something that then becomes unworkable for the student or students who may need to use it. We need to know what our facilities are like, how can they accommodate the types of bathrooms we may be talking about, and we need to know a cost. We just, I, I believe that's something we need to have some information on. I believe that we can get to a place, but anybody who's met me, I, I probably need more information. I'm not sure in the next three to four weeks we will have it, and I think we as a board need to discuss, Ms. Healy, as you alluded to, and others, what is the appropriate process for this? And maybe that's something that we talk about at the retreat or something, but I do think it's a discussion for this board to have, based on comments that we receive overall, and what we believe is right. Because I do believe we are united in wanting to do the right thing for our students. But it may not always go quickly, because I have seen decisions made in haste that we have come to regret. Not just here, in my own personal life. And I want to make sure we do it as right as we can, and I just will need some more information and discussion. But I applaud that we're talking about it, as opposed to not.
Ms. Decatur?
So, I just have a few questions. This policy, is this, is there going to be a recommendation to add transgender to the non-discrimination policy as well, or is this linked kind of to the non-discrimination policy? What's, what's the plan with that?
Okay, so, the attorneys are indicating you can't, but they feel, based on the eastern courts that represent Stafford, that we already have sex in our non-discrimination.
So, it's linked.
And because we have sex, and it, it covers transgender.
Okay.
So, they're recommending you don't have to, but if the board wants to add a category, you can, but currently, they feel strongly that it's covered.
Okay. Is there a plan? If and when a policy is passed, is there a plan for training your staff on this policy?
Absolutely. Not only is there a plan, I, I, I hope you respect that parts of this policy is already in action. I mean, the, the notion that you don't have, we don't have transgender children in our schools that are not already, and the good news is, we've been having it way before I got here, and you're not aware of it. Okay? Well, you might be aware of it.
We might be. We're aware of it.
I'm not aware of it. And, and my point is, yes, we, we will, like all policies,
Okay.
review with all staff that need to be aware, and this one has probably the profile of one where everyone needs to be aware.
So, and I, you know, like Ms. Egan asked, I'm, I'm sure this has been vetted through legal and it's been very carefully worded. My concern is when you're training your staff on this policy, if I were one of your teachers and I read this and it says, staff should use, you know, the name that they, I don't, I don't know what should means. Is that an option? Is that a must? It's not, it's not a must, it's a should, I, it's a
It's a will, which means may.
So, I, I'm confused. I assume teachers may be confused, and I want to make sure that we're not just supporting our students, but we're supporting our teachers, that they're not lost in the middle of a gymnasium wondering what to do or what's going to be appropriate anymore. So, I want to make sure that when, when something is passed, that it is absolutely clear what should and will and
That's a good point, because should might not suggest shall. And where I think we ran into the confusion a couple of months ago, was that staff was not aware. And this, I'm not sure it would totally address it, because that was a, you know, there were two matters there, but they were also confused if they were allowed to, which I think created why we're, good, good reason why we're here today.
Yeah. Another question, concern, I, I read a lot of policy from other places, I forwarded you one. Some of them talk about new construction and renovation within the policy, and it kind of touches on the bathrooms that a lot of us are discussing, how to construct new buildings, how to go about the renovation of old buildings, when that is not talking about renovating it right now for this purpose, but when you renovate, you kind of like the Ed specs we're talking about.
Yeah, I think, moving forward, I've had a couple of principals, I think I shared with you, make recommendations that, why do we still, and was, actually, it's fading away from this, but why do we build urinals? Children don't have urinals at home, okay? That they should have, you know, their own stalls, and that's the direction we're heading. So, to Ms. Egan's question, I mean, retrofitting what we currently have, I mean, that's a capital discussion. But moving forward, I think this is absolutely something that we should be factoring in, is having neutral gender bathrooms. And you may have noticed if you go out to restaurants and other places, more places are doing that.
Right.
I can tell you that the corporate world is doing the same. When they're building their office complexes, there are no more men's bathrooms and women's bathrooms. They are now being constructed as non-gender specific.
And, and just to kind of, I can absolutely see where you and many are coming from when, when it, it does specifically say foster an understanding of gender identity. And, you know, we do have to be understanding of that, that while, while our children are with our schools, probably more than they're at home, parents still feel the responsibility to be the parent. And I know you agree, and again, I know that there was careful consideration to the things we put in here and the reasons why. But I do want to make sure that we're not stepping on anyone's toes, because I don't want to be, I don't want to tell anyone in this audience how to parent their children on, on either side. And so, I want to make sure that we're not stepping on anyone's toes and that we're honoring individual families' beliefs, whatever they might be, so, but, well, anyways, I'm not going to tell you how to write a policy.
I, I didn't really express it well, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just trying to picture the situation where a child brings it up to a staff member, and then we say, sorry, we can't talk about it. Yeah, and so I'm just trying to figure out a way, and that's why I was proposing that the staff member would contact the family and try to have this discussion with everyone there, instead of just saying, we, I can't discuss it. I, I think that might be a little bit more confusing to a young person.
Well, there's probably going to be more, but it's late, so. Ms. Young?
Oh, Ms. Young, hello, welcome back. I sound like eight Pickett Lane, is he still here? So, I'm just a little tired, that's all. So, Dr. Kizner, I've been in this county long enough and been in these school systems many, many years with my four children also, and, yeah. I know how it Um, I know how it feels to be discriminated against, and, um, you know, my kids know it too. One of my concerns with this group of students, that individuals, um, the public, parents may think this just started, like you said, this has been going on all along. Um, there are teachers that are helping these kids out and, you know, hiding, you know, to allow them to go where they, they want to go. Um, this will give them some comfort. At the same time, I want those teachers that feel uncomfortable with this to be able to not be penalized or punished because, you know, their religion or the, the way how they feel, they don't want to handle it, that, you know, that we have something in there to help them out, that there is another teacher, a younger teacher or another teacher that may take over that, um, situation on their behalf without, you know, making them feel like, you know, they're, they're evil or they're biased or whatever that feeling may be. Um, so the teachers are important to make sure that they feel comfortable, but that it's standardized, because that's one of the things that I hear, like, you know, we went to one school, Sarah and I, and, you know, they already had gender-neutral bathrooms and, you know, they have it all taken care of, and then you go to another one and it's like, you know, like, hush, you know, we're not talking about it. So we could make sure that, you know, um, parents know that it's already in the school system and what we're doing in the school system, and that this policy is just a matter of making that small group of individuals feel comfortable and not making the rest of the, the school system like, um, no, you have to, you know, go along with this situation that's been going on already. We just need to make sure that everybody is comfortable with what we're doing. Um, yeah, that, that's all I have. I mean, yeah. But I know how it feels.
Ms. Egan, did you have anything else you wanted? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I, I would not like us to leave this evening without thanking Dr. Kizner for, for bringing us this policy. And we did ask him to, to come up with something as a result of, of the lockdown, um, drill that went, went awry, so I do appreciate that. And I, I, another thing I wanted to clarify, I think, and maybe you can tell me whether I'm correct about this or not, we are not suggesting that trans children must go into the bathroom of the gender that they identify with, because many of these children probably don't want to go into whichever bathroom. So instead, we're talking about doing what is often already being done in our schools, which is parents, students and the administration would discuss together what, what's involved. Um, I do want to piggyback on something Ms. Young said. Quite frankly, it, it's really not okay with me for a teacher to refuse to call a student by the name they wish to be called and by the pronouns that they wish to be called. I understand if the teacher forgets occasionally or makes a mistake, but I actually consider that bullying, to actually talk to a student and refuse to use the name that they wish to use, and I am absolutely opposed to bullying our students by teachers.
Thank you. Mr. McOscar?
Great discussion tonight, both, um, not only the comments we received, but by the board here. It looks like, um, you know, there's some, I think there's some things, first of all, Dr. Kizner, thank you so much for bringing this to us. You know, we hired you for a reason, and this is, this is, this is the stuff we hired you for, right? It's to make the hard decisions. And so, uh, you know, there are some things that I was concerned with. I, uh, Ms. Decatur talked about twenty-four oh two, I think it is, policy, the anti-harassment and why, why gender identity wasn't on that, because that, that was specifically talked to, um, when the issue, when incident happened, why, uh, last year as well, is why didn't we add, um, gender identity to, uh, the harassment, um, policy? And so I would be interested to see the, uh, what, what legal had to say about that. Um, you know, is there, is there something that we're leaving ourselves open to as a board? And, uh, you know, these, this is, these are tough decisions, um, on, on what to do, where the, we'll be the first county in Virginia to have a written policy, if I'm not mistaken, on, on this issue. Um, and I remember last year, uh, and when this came back up to us, we specifically didn't want to jump out there and be the first county to go down this track and pave this way, uh, some board members. And we voted, uh, to kind of, uh, not, uh, move forward with, with a policy. So it, it, it's, um, however, do I, do I, you know, I have four kids in the system, do they, um, are they in daily contact with transgender? Ki- yes. And do they have a prob, the kids have a problem with it? No. Okay? Um, for the most part. However, that puts me in a position as a school board member, do I, do I take a stand as Dwayne McOscar on what I think my personal values are, and I transpose it into this document and, for an approval or approval? Or do I step back and actually find out what, what are my constituents saying that actually put me here? What, what are they saying about this issue? Um, what are the teachers saying about this issue? Like Ms. Egan, I mean, these are the things that, I, I think this is going to, I think this is going to go someplace. I just, and I'm not trying to, I, I know you've heard a lot of help, help, help with having us understand this. Um, I just think we, it may go initially as a compromise when, when our questions are asked, or answered and we, we're, we feel comfortable as a board. I think parent and teacher, I think we, we sent surveys out for, um, we sent surveys out for early school, an early start of school. Um, you know, do we, do we do something like that? I don't know. Uh, I don't know. So, uh, this is a good discussion. Um, I think we have some things, there, there were a few things in here specifically, uh, that I, I'm going to, I'll send you an email on about the identification and is there, is there, should we bring, some, some people have, have said, well, on the, on the identification, should we bring, uh, psychologist or not, not, not that the kids, the children are, are, there's something wrong with them, but i- is, is it something that it should be an outside person kind of making an evaluation before we say, hey? Because we've seen a lot on this board, um, mostly good parents.
If I could just-
Uh, we, we have, we've seen, we've seen things.
The, the, I just want to just bring it back to the child, and, and I'm not, I respect that you guys even gave me permission to put this on the agenda. A lot of school divisions would not do that, so I applaud you and I applaud the people that are still in this room and listening, because this conversation in many communities would not happen. So I do thank you. I also would say, although we all praised and liked that little girl that spoke, part of me found it sad that she had to come up and talk about her sister. And what I don't, what I prefer not to see happen, whatever way you need to gauge more input, is that we ask children who are transgender and families to have to defend something that they live with, they love and they respect, because I think that would be remarkably unfair. Okay? So whatever way you need to do it, we should do it in a way that they have opportunities to express, as you heard tonight, but not put them in a position, because they are minorities. Okay? And if there was a vote, I suspect the vote would be not to port, support this policy. That's just my, my gut. I hope I'm wrong. No, not you guys voting, I'm saying there was a referendum, okay? But most of the laws that we have to protect discrimination would probably be voted the same way. Okay? When you look at when they first passed the law to allow a certain class to have protections. So I just would like to keep those children and families, um, as much as possible not to have to defend themselves. I know I'm sounding tired, because I am.
I know. And it's, it's been a long night. I, I do have just one more follow-up comment, and it's to Ms. Decatur's comment. There are a lot of shoulds in this policy, and I saw one shall. So it's not like it's all shoulds. There is, there is one shall, and that shall is, is, I, I, I'm looking through, I'm, it's all like blurring together, but as I recall, it had to do with if a, if a child was uncomfortable with sharing, um, with a transgender, then, then another option shall be made available. So clearly whoever drafted this knew the difference between should and shall. And, and, and if, if, if the intent is to have a policy to, to set a standard that, that's going to be applied across the board, then why, and this is a rhetorical question, why are we saying should, 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 should? Because should doesn't mean anything, okay? And that's just what I'm, I'll leave it with that. So, well, it, 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 there's that one shall. And if, if, if that weren't there, I'd say, well, maybe they, you know, just put it that way. So it's, it's something to raise to the attorney, because what good is a policy that says we should do something if there's no-
Totally in agreement.
And this, and-
Not in the background.
Madam Chair, I, I would like to go maybe even one step further, and, and I think I said it in my discussion with Dr. Kizner, about having the same person who drafted the policy be the legal eye that looks at it. I mean, why can't, so one attorney drafted it, let's get maybe Jennifer Parrish to, to do a once-over with, she's not involved.
Yeah.
I just want to get a clean look at it and tell us what you think, not what you believe because you drafted it, which is a bias there, far as I'm concerned.
Maybe once we have a further, longer-
Well, yeah, and, and that, that's an excellent point, and, and perhaps what we need to do as a board is to have some more discussion, to get some more input and to see what questions we have, or if there's things we want addressed in here, or things that need to be cleared up. Generally, if we have a policy, we have a regulation that, that goes along with it. And I don't see a regulation here, and there may be a reason for that, I, I don't know. It's, it's getting late and I know we're all tired, because we started at five o'clock in the, yes, in the congenial place.
No, take, take, and I think it's good, I think it's, I think, but I think this is a great, you know, I think you saying, this, this board is putting this, this is a hard topic. It's obviously hard, because it is the first policy consideration, I think, in the state of Virginia. And I think there are some things in here, like if a student is young, they should, well, if we're going to make a, you give me a grade, give me an age, I mean, I, I mean, I think this is, this is the kind of thing we're, we're moving towards, uh, to make, to make it better, I think, so. Whether, uh, not saying what your all vote, your all's vote is going to be, but-
All right. Well, this will be on for information at, at a minimum at the next meeting. And I just asked the board to think about, you know, you know, where you would like to go from here, um, if there is something, whether it be advisory groups or, um, public hearings or something going out, you know, to, to-
I have my equity group Thursday night, so that, they will, this is on the agenda. I know, I count on Alapha Missy to record what your comments are, but if you could also, over the next couple of weeks, before we meet in January, just to send me again, so I make sure I capture, um, your questions.
Okay. And Ms. Decatur has one final comment. I would- Thanks, Ene. I would just urge, um, so it, so, so we've decided that, um, you know, we haven't decided, it's coming back for information at, at least once more. Um, I can only imagine, uh, the number of public comment speakers we'll have then, and I would just urge, uh, the community to maybe reach out to someone that, uh, has a different belief than you and sit down and have a conversation and ask some questions. I did, and, um, it was very enlightening, um, and I have a, a deeper understanding, and, uh, it was incredibly helpful for me. Thank you.
All right. Now I have to make a whole bunch of announcements of the upcoming meetings. Um, the next school board meeting is January eighth. All right. Now, Ms. Hall, you said I have to read all these, right? We've never read these before, but, you know, why not? The night is young.
Where are my cookies?
December seventeenth at six p.m., the Finance and Budget Committee is meeting. December seventeenth at six p.m., the CTE Advisory Committee is meeting. January seventh at six p.m., the Gifted Advisory Committee is meeting. January seventh at six p.m., the School Health Advisory Committee is meeting. January eighth, and this is sometime before our seven o'clock meeting, the school board is having a work session to receive redistricting plans from the consultant. And January eighth at seven p.m. is the school board's annual organizational meeting. And now we can go home. Thank you. Helen, is that all you have? I got to get upstairs to talk to you.